Welcome, everybody. This is the City Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is May 12th, 2008, and we have several petitions on tonight. Anybody wishing to address the board tonight, make sure that you just step up to the podium, state your name and address, and also write down your name and address. We have several petitions on tonight. The first one is a continuance with Middlesex Street. The second one is a request for a special permit by Sprint Wireless. The third one is 774 Dutton Street, a request for a special permit. The fourth one is a request for a variance for Coalition for Better Acre at 760 Merrimack Street. The fifth one is Brazzi Development Corp., a request for a variance on Marginal Street. And the final one is BPV Lowell LLC, 122 Western Ave. And then there's, as far as other business after we take the regular petitions, we'll hear a request for an extension for Brazzi Development Corp. on a prior approval, and also for 21 Eugene Street, the applicant Albert Stamp. So we'll start off with the first one, which was continued from a few weeks ago, or about a month ago, and that's 868 Middlesex Street. Can a representative of 868 Middlesex Street please address the board? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Give me one minute while Patrick and Jim get set up. We come in front of this board numbers of time with the project on 848-868 Middlesex Street with the petition of parking for four residential units, church on the second floor, and a commercial property on the first floor. Tonight, Patrick from Keatsham-Norstrom is going to be speaking, the engineer who did the project, and also Jim from GPI with Trafford Control is also going to be speaking. So I'm going to forward to Jim, to Patrick, so he can continue on from here, and I'll be glad to answer any questions after that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
As the pastor said, my name is Patrick Colburn from Keatsham-Norstrom Associates up in Bedford, New Hampshire. If you recall, we were here about a month ago to represent this plan, again, 848 and 868 Middlesex Street, map 121, lots 10 and 868 on Middlesex Street. Present owner is Commercial Realty Corporation, the applicant Pastor Juan Mejia, Mejia Management Corp. About a month ago, we came and we presented a plan for the pastor's proposed church. It's a mixed-use building, church, office, residential space. At that time, we represented a plan that proposed a parking lot of 39 spaces that was to be developed in an area that is currently housed by a large warehouse-type structure. During that meeting, you gentlemen raised some concern regarding our lack of approval of the new plan from the planning board. When the pastor first started his project, he worked with a company that produced a sketch plan that was conditionally approved by the Lowell Planning Board. Following that conditional approval, which was based on the city engineer's approval of the site plan, the pastor contracted with our office to not only engineer him a set of construction drawings, but also address the comments of the city. The first place that we came following that survey and design was to this board, and basically at that point, we had not presented the revised plan to the planning board. The skepticism a month ago from this board was that we presented a parking layout that represented 39 spaces. What happens if the planning board asks for something through their approval process that might sacrifice a further space? So what she asked us to do is go back before the planning board, achieve their approval of our new layout, and then come back here tonight, and that's what we're doing. And you guys were right. Basically, what happened upon sitting down with the associate planner Erin Clausen and the city engineer, what we discovered is that we were shy on shade trees per the landscape code. The amount of parking and impervious paved surface that we have on-site necessitates the need for six shade trees. At that point, we couldn't accommodate that because we didn't have adequate green space. You also raised concern here at this board regarding the Health Department's approval of not having a dumpster on-site. Upon talking to Bernie Clancy over at the Health Department, he suggested that we do put a dumpster on-site, and he suggested that we see how often, based on the amount of trash that is produced on-site, how often that needs to be picked up. Because we're a mixed-use, we are not eligible for city pickup, so the pastor will have to coordinate with a private contractor for that. What that did is, by adding a dumpster pad, as you see here, and shuffling around to produce room for an additional shade tree here, a small landscape island with a shade tree here, and a third here, we lost two more parking spaces. So what we're doing here tonight, gentlemen, is presenting a plan that proposes the same church structure, mixed use with residence and office space, with an associated parking lot of 37 spaces. Last Monday night, we went before the planning board with this very plan that you have before you tonight, and they again conditionally approved this site plan. The only outstanding condition, following my meeting with Lisa DeMayo, is that we satisfy her stormwater management stipulations. Because Lisa's been on vacation, she has not had a chance to get comments back to me regarding her formal review of my stormwater analysis. We sat down that day with her and Erin and went through the plan sheet by sheet. She's very familiar with the stormwater management system that I am proposing and seemed generally accepting of it, but at that point could not speak because she had not taken the time to review the calculations. I believe you should have gotten in a packet tonight letters, a letter from the planning board that has that condition along with one other that is also as note number one on the plan that you have, which basically requires that the four residential units above the proposed church be used for congregation members only. The reason for that stipulation is due to the parking calculation, which Jim Nguyen from GPI, standing beside me tonight, will be happy to discuss. Let's see.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
The second condition, subject to the proposed residential units being reserved for members of the church as indicated by the applicant in order to provide additional parking on-site. So does that mean that the units are going to be allocated only to church members?
That's...
Is that a restriction on the sale of it?
That's exactly correct, yeah. Because what happened is, in running the calculation, the parking calculation, we discovered that those apartment units above were actually double-counted in the parking calculation. Again, Jim, if you'd like to...
Yeah, actually, I can touch upon that a little more.
Okay.
Jim Nguyen, traffic engineer with GPI. We did revise and update a letter dated April 25th. Originally, the whole intent of the project was to have those apartment buildings for the church members, you know, but we were leaving it open such that, you know, it wouldn't be required, and if anything happened, they could put other members in there, or other than members. Based on our ITE calculations, we came up with a parking demand that was higher than our 37 spaces. So we were trying to, although we don't think we need as much as the ITE recommendations, we wanted to provide measures that we can accommodate that ITE recommendation because it's really an industry standard. So what we did is, we basically committed that we would have those apartment units for members only, so it would basically be written at least at their members. In that way, you know, those are going to be churchgoers as well as...
Are they going to be for sale or for lease?
That's for rental.
For rental units?
That is correct.
So the church will continue to own those units?
That's correct.
And the restriction will be...
The church doesn't own the property. The church is going to be paying rent, too.
Okay. Who owns the property?
Mejia's management.
Okay. So you own the property?
That is correct.
So if the units are only going to be leased to church members, and what happens if, for some reason, the church doesn't survive?
Survive in which manner?
If the church fails, if you end up, you know, closing down the church for any reason, and you have these residential units, I'm just wondering, you know, what, how does that restriction affect...
It doesn't affect it in no way because they continue using the parking spaces.
Yeah, well, I think it would be approved as a church, so I think if anything happens beyond, and I would imagine that condition will continue with it unless they come back to this board or come back to the planning board. So I think if they ever use in the future for something else, you know, or want to change that condition, I would believe they would have to come in front of the board.
Right. That's what I figured. I just want to make that clear because that will be a condition, so as long as the pastor is aware of that.
Okay.
And now, on the parking still, you had the dumpster. What about the turnaround for the truck to get in to do that? Has that been allocated for?
What we've had to assume because of the site limitations is, first of all, that the trash pickup will not occur during church service, which is basically, I believe, three nights a week, Pastor?
Correct.
And once on Sunday morning. So the dump truck will actually enter the site via Middlesex Street, utilize this area for maneuvering, and then either, you know, pull a multi-point turn or back down the parking lot, pull into this space here, and then pull directly out. I have placed the turning temples on. It works just fine. But we, you know, we did have to assume that there would not be cars parked in these spaces here due to, you know, site limitations.
Okay.
To finish up, too, I just wanted to touch on, as a recap, I don't know if you gentlemen are in receipt of letters from the Health Department and the Fire Department that you asked for at the last meeting. I have copies if you aren't.
We had some email correspondence, but I don't have anything from the Fire Department.
Jim will hand those out for you.
Great. Thank you.
And the only other thing I want to touch base on is the final condition of the site plan approval from the planning board, which is the stormwater analysis and Lisa DeMayo's review. Basically, anything that happens with that system will happen subsurface, so it will not infringe on the layout of the parking here. We feel that, at this point, we've got a firm layout that we're going to stick with. Anything that we need to do as far as expansion of the stormwater management analysis will occur subsurface.
Okay.
So we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you very much. Pastor, anything else?
We're here to answer any questions that may...
Okay. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this project, in favor? This project, please approach the podium. Welcome in. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Johanna Ramos, and I live in Nashua, C-5 Black Oak Drive. Basically, I'm another member of the church. I'm new to that church, however, I am also just been named Secretary and Treasurer of the church, and we just want to express to the committee how interested we are in just having a place where we can go and just gather, where we can go and, you know, do what we have to do without having to bother anybody. We believe in safety first for our children, for our elderly, and if, you know, if there's anything that I can answer to you that might compel you to approve this, you know, on behalf of the city, I would be more than glad to answer any of your questions. More than anything, I just wanted to be able to tell you that we just really have been working really hard to get this, and we want to please the city, we want to please the government, and we want to also be able to please our beliefs and our church congregation, which stands up there at every meeting, you know, tenaciously. We just, whatever we can do to improve, whatever you guys have so far would be...
Okay. Could I ask one thing of you?
Yes.
I know a lot of the folks up there who came here many meetings to support the project, and I realize they don't speak English. Could you just ask them for a show of hands if they support this project?
Todos los que estén a favor del proyecto, por favor levanten las manos.
Okay. The board recognizes the support and the bleachers. Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this project, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition of this petition, in opposition? In opposition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and now we'll open up to the board. Bill, we'll start down with you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, just a couple of comments. First of all, I'm very satisfied and happy with the plans we finally received. I think we finally got the product that we've been looking for, and I'd like to thank Mr. Colburn and Mr. Nguyen. I think they've done a bang-up job since they've come on board. I know a lot of the questions I had, a lot of concerns I had, I think have all been answered. The dumpster especially was a concern I had. The Health Department, I see, came in on May 8th, so they've been here recently. They passed it. Just one quick question I would have. How are you going to control the parking in that area, Pastor, as far as ensuring, you know, whose parking there belongs in that area?
The most traffic that it's going to be in that area, it's going to be on Sundays.
No, I mean people that are not attending service, because there's a lot of cars that are in that area because of the park, there's a lot of activity at the park, and I was just curious how you're going to try to control that.
We were, I don't think we're going to have a problem with that, just because there's going to be somebody in the building at all times, and there's going to be a sign saying "private parking." And it is private parking, so I think by putting up a sign, everybody should respect. If the car does not belong in the parking, it will be towed.
I think it's going to come down to an enforcement issue. If it becomes a problem, I mean, I'm sure that the Lowell Police Department would have to become involved in...
Well, I think there's going to be a lot of money spent here, and it's a great project if it gets started and becomes completed, but that's just an observation. But I, you know, the landscaping that you put in there, the lighting, I'm sure it's going to look great once the paving is done and everything's marked out. I'm really excited to see the finished product, to be honest with you.
Thank you, sir.
You know, and I wish you the best of luck with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Jack?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Bill, my colleague. We've wanted to see this project come to fruition. I think it's a great project for the city. To be candid, I'm sorry it took so long. I also agree with my colleague that Mr. Colburn and Mr. Nguyen have obviously brought this very quickly, I think, to a final solution. I am very happy also to see the documentation from the Fire Department, which references, particularly, the access on Middlesex Street, that it will be wide enough, and also noting that it does state that the building will need 100% sprinkler and fire alarm coverage, and I'm sure that will be addressed. All that being considered, I think it's a great project for the city. It'll help revitalize that part of the city and also helps some folks, as a supporter of the petition, as said, as far as their religious beliefs are concerned. I think it's a great project for the city, and I'm now in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Cory?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also in agreement with my fellow board members. This project has come a long way. It's been a long time coming, but the finished product is outstanding. I think it's going to be a great thing for that area down there. As Mr. Bailey stated, all our concerns have been met: lighting, snow removal, green space, it's all there, and I am prepared to approve this project tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cory. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the comments of my fellow board members on how this project has really evolved in a lot of very positive ways. I have a few questions for the applicant. The drainage plans that you have here, you've got a very steep slope that you're dealing with. Can you explain how you're going to catch all the drainage? One of the concerns is that we don't go onto the street with this.
Absolutely.
And also, if you could summarize kind of the basis for your calculations in terms of storage.
No problem at all. If you would, turn in the plan that you got to sheet number four of 10, titled "Grading Drainage and Utility Plan." On that sheet, you'll see various spot shots, percent grade, et cetera. What happens on-site with the stormwater is essentially what happens today with a few modifications. The site today, basically, sheet flows from south toward northeast and flows down Middlesex Street, in the curb line of Middlesex Street, to this catch basin labeled here. What our proposal does is, again, drain from southwest to northeast, and the stormwater is captured in a curb line produced by the proposed vertical granite curb. That's why I left the space between the landscape islands and the vertical granite to allow that stormwater flow to continue down this curb line and into the low point at proposed catch basin number 11. The stormwater that bypasses catch basin number 11 is caught in catch basin 10. The only stormwater leaving the site untreated or undetained is the stormwater in the triangle. If you drew a line from proposed catch basin 10 to this corner of the entrance drive, it'd be the southwest corner of the entrance drive there, that triangle of pavement would be the only stormwater that bypasses our system. All of the stormwater otherwise is captured in these two catch basins. Those catch basins inlet a substantial subsurface stormwater system that contains open-bottom chambers. Those chambers are bedded in 3/4-inch stone, and the stormwater is treated and infiltrated into the soil beneath us. What we did is hired a geotechnical consultant that went on-site and performed test borings to see what was under there, and what they found is clean sand to depths of 10 to 14 feet.
So you have done perk tests?
Yes, sir. Yep. And from there, this stormwater system will treat and mitigate the flow through the 25-year storm event. Beyond the 25-year storm event, the flow will percolate out this low-lying catch basin and flow exactly where it does today, out into Middlesex Street, down the curb line of Middlesex Street, and into the city's municipal system from there. That's the design, and that's what we're waiting on comment from Lisa.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Kavanagh, to support your concerns, the planning board did approve this with two conditions, one being their stormwater plan does have to be approved by the engineer's office. So it looks, it appears is going to get approved. I will, we are going to adopt the condition set forth by the planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. And just one question for the applicant. We heard testimony in favor of social events. Can you describe, beyond the church activities, other types of social gatherings and kind of what the anticipated kind of attendance...
Besides our church activities, we also have weddings, Mother's Day, Father's Day, activities like that. And those activities, we have ushers that are going to be outside controlling traffic and directing traffic. Anytime, any time we do special services, we always going to have ushers outside on the parking lot controlling the traffic from the parking lot to Middlesex Street because we know it's a very heavy street, and matter of fact, we're trying to work with the Lowell Police Department and see if, when those special services come, we can have an officer out there to provide help with us.
Great. Thank you very much. As I say, I think this plan has come a long way, and I'm definitely in favor of this current plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Rick?
I also echo the comments of my fellow board members. I think if you first, when you first came out with this, if you came out with this plan and all the work that was put into it, you probably wouldn't have gone so many meetings. It's a learning curve. I do have a question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Building Commissioner. Bob, would it be wise for us to put any de-restrictions on those four units? That way, if things did go awry, if, say, that the church did have a problem, that we have something to use when they, if they did start renting out to other people and causing trouble over there? If, I'm not saying that, I just want to try to give the Building Department a little bit of, and the Health Department, some type of leverage will, if it does ever cause a problem over there, because it's such a congested area. It does get tight over there.
We could. We could seek some advice from the city solicitor, but that certainly would be an option to install, initiate a deed restriction with the residential units based on the pastor's comments. Yes?
And Rick, if I could, I think just by us adopting that restriction, that number two on what the planning board made, I think that the church has kind of held to that, and if they're not, if it ceases becoming a church, like one of the, what the gentleman said, they would have to come before this board again or before the planning board for a different use. So I think we have two levels of protection there.
Okay.
And I was thinking the same thing about a deed, but I don't think, at this point, probably legally, that's necessary.
All right.
I think there's plenty of protection by adopting that condition, so long as this board does adopt that condition.
Yeah, I also agree with that. The protection is probably equal in this particular case.
All right. The other thing is, I'm in favor of this, and it's a very nice plan.
I do want to also make a comment. The reason I want, we're asking church members to occupy the residence is because we try to keep our church in control of cleaning and safety, and that's priority, like the Secretary of the Church said, "Safety is the first for us." That's how come we have moved this project for such a long time, have made a big investment. Where we are right now is a safe issue, and I don't feel comfortable preaching the word of God if, I know this, I'm not in a legal place, and I'm not here to say there's other churches that are not legal, but I feel more comfortable knowing that their sprinkler system, that the person living on top of me are church members, that when we are in church, they are in church, too. They're not just anybody who's going to come into the building and just do what they want. So I think that church is going to have very good control of the building, the four units, and the office spaces on the bottom.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak on this petition? Any board members, anything else to say? Okay, need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the following condition, that we adopt the condition set forth by the planning board.
Second the motion.
Need a roll call, Maribel?
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Gary?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Knox?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Benvenu?
Approve with conditions.
Okay, sir, you've been approved unanimously. I just need you to step up to the board, sign this plan, and please give it to the Secretary, Maribel. Thank you, sir, and good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, the next petition on the agenda is ZB 2008-00015, "Special Permit for Telecommunications from Sprint Wireless Broadband, 605 Lawrence Street," also known as 649 Lawrence Street. This is a petition for the addition of three panel antennas to the existing smokestack, two equipment cabinets in an existing equipment room, coaxial cables with GPS antenna to existing telecommunications site according to Section 7.6 of the zoning code. Could a representative of this petition please address the board? Welcome in.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ann Malone of Prinsel Bell Gloveski &amp; Tie at 100 Cambridge Street in Boston, representing Sprint Nextel. First of all, I apologize, I don't have a large-scale set of plans for this evening. They weren't delivered in time. I have copies of the ones that were submitted, the application, if you need any extras. Otherwise, Sheet A 2, I believe, probably gives you the best idea.
Does anybody need a copy? I think it's all in the package. No, that's fine, ma'am. You can proceed.
Sort of by way of background, Sprint is currently launching a fourth-generation mobile broadband network nationwide, which will allow it to provide consumers with advanced, or allow it to provide advanced wireless internet services. Particularly, Sprint is upgrading its existing wireless facilities with WiMAX technology, which will allow it to, them to provide their customers high-speed internet access and allow them to transfer a large amount of data at very fast speeds. This site in particular currently has six antennas up, which are used for wireless telecommunications services. What Sprint is proposing to do is to add three new antennas, which will be WiMAX antennas. They look the same as what's already up there, they're similar in size, they will be painted to match the smokestack as the other antennas are. The three antennas will be added directly above the six Sprint antennas that are up there right now on the smokestack. In addition to the antennas, Sprint will propose to add one equipment cabinet that supports these antennas, which will be located in the existing equipment room next to the cabinets that are already there.
So there's no new cabinet that's going to be put on?
There's one new cabinet, yes. Other than that, there isn't anything. I mean, this is pretty much a simple upgrade to what's already there. You know, there's not a whole, I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding the site, but that's sort of the extent of what they're proposing to do.
Okay. Anything else, ma'am, for now?
I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, this petition in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll start on this end. Rick?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions for the applicant. What's the effective radius of the WiMAX coverage, roughly the coverage area you would get here?
Honestly, I want to, I don't know, and I, we had a RF engineer who's supposed to come tonight, couldn't show up. So, and I also apologize because I'm covering for James Hoyt, who filed the application. So this is a new site to me as well. I, my, I want to say, I can't say for sure, it's probably five miles or so, but I don't know that for absolute sure, so I don't want to say that as sort of a...
That sounds about right in my experience, but, and this is, this is a new data-only coverage, right? It's not to do with voice cellular communications.
Right, it's different than the telephone services. It would be sort of like what you'd use on a PDA, or it will, it would compete also, though, with Comcast and Verizon and DSL type as well, but it would just be very high speeds.
In terms of the coverage, you know, one of the questions is, you know, coverage gaps. So given that you're building out a new data network, are there plans for other requests for antennas in the Lowell area?
There may be. I can't say that for sure either, although I can say that the goal is to try and put them on existing sites. So, you know, sort of to avoid having to put up another tower or adding anything else on a building, it would be using existing sites and sort of having them blend in and look the same as they did before as best as possible. So that's the goal.
And they're, they're pretty non-obtrusive based on what's there today.
Right, it wouldn't look any different, it would just be right above it. They painted to match the smokestack, and so it would blend in.
And in the application, it refers to providing, the installation will benefit the town of Westford residents by offering a wireless option?
I saw Belmont.
I did not write this...
I also saw a reference to Belmont as well.
I actually, as I was coming here, and I said to Ted, goes by Ted, but James, he's the one who drafted that, and I was like, you know, I don't, I didn't even draft this brief, and I'm going to have to, I think it was a typo, basically.
We'll take it as a compliment.
Huh?
We'll take it as a compliment.
Well, since it's pointing in three ordinal directions, it's going to provide circular coverage, it's not just pointing in one direction anyway.
Right.
And this is, the facility itself is largely automated, so there's not a lot of access that's required, is my...
Right, it won't be anything more than what they generally come, I think it's like once a month or something, just to make sure everything's working okay, but it would not increase the amount of trips anyone, any maintenance would be making to the site as it is right now.
Thank you, no further questions.
Thanks, Kevin. Cory?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, this is an existing tower that you're just adding on to, correct?
Right.
You know, aesthetically, it's, there's little or no change, there's already a cell tower there, and I think this is, you know, a good spot for something like this. It's on top of a six-story building, a little closer than I'd like to residential, but unfortunately, it's there already, but I do support the project. Thank you very much.
I just have one comment. What is the, I saw in the application, the GPS with E911, the emergency 911, is that?
I believe...
Is that almost like an Amber Alert type of thing with telecommunications, or?
I actually don't know for sure. I know, I'm assuming that that, it's something to that extent where you can know where the signal's coming from.
Right.
I think it's often required at some point.
Well, it said in the application it's now required, so I was just curious as to what it was, yeah.
I don't know for sure, but that's generally what it is, the same, I mean, probably what you, I think they're actually, they're probably using an antenna there that already does it for the telecommunications, so it's the same thing, but it must be in a way to tell where you are if you're making a call or something like that.
Okay.
That's my assumption, but I don't know for sure.
Mr. Chairman, it gives enhanced location-based services for, in parallel with the data network, so you can do a better job of locating the cellphone.
Okay. All right, Jack?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kavanaugh, is correct that, I think one of the, Nextel Sprint, they have a hybrid phone now, and part of it, of the, that hybrid marketing includes GPS, so that's partly why they've done that, for that requirement. The only question I had was, how many equipment cabinets are going into the existing equipment room?
One.
Okay, the only reason I mention is because on the cover sheet we have, it does say two, so I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, it does. I believe it's only one, from looking at the plans, it's one, and I, it's just one radio cabinet. I'll double-check.
It says three panel antennas to the existing smokestack and then two equipment cabinets. I'm just curious, that's all.
One's existing, though, right now, right?
Yes, Mike, what it looks like is they're, they must be adding some kind of, this looks, and adding a rectifier, which I don't know what that is, but usually they add two, which is why I'm surprised that there's only one here that is shown proposed.
Yeah, the way this reads, it says two equipment cabinets in the existing equipment room, so that's why I'm just...
My guess is what, they may have been able to add the technology to the existing cabinet for one of them, and so they only had to add one new cabinet. But based on these plans, and this is what we go on generally, then it's only one new cabinet that they're adding.
Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I agree with my other board members, it's on a existing smokestack now, it doesn't pose any additional hazard. I also agree with Mr. Belanger about proximity, but that's subject for another time, and I think I would support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, do you have any other towers in the city of Lowell?
Any other towers?
Yeah. Is this your only facility?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I apologize. I would assume there may be other, but I don't know for sure.
Well, I'm not in opposition to the proposal, but maybe in the future, I would like to see Sprint show up with some more people the next time, to be honest with you, so the questions can be answered. I'm not in opposition to this, but I think it'd be helpful to this board if the right people were here the next time.
Absolutely, I understand, and I apologize that I can't be more helpful on the technological...
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. And I've been by there, you know, I go by there several times a day, many years, and I've never even noticed that the antennas were on there, so it certainly doesn't have any negative impact on the neighborhood from my perspective, so I'd be willing to support it. So I need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second the motion.
Roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Mr. Knox?
Approve.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Approve.
Ma'am, you've been approved unanimously with five votes. Could you please come up and just sign this plan, and please give it to our secretary, Maribel? Thank you very much. The applicant is Stanley Sokolowski, 774 Dutton Street. This is located in a light industrial zone, the petitioner is petitioning to allow an additional use of a takeout coffee shop within an existing building according to section 12.4.1, the table use regulations. Would a representative of Mr. Sokolowski please address the board? Welcome, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Ed Grollick, standing in for Leo White and representing Stanley Sokolowski. Stanley Sokolowski has owned this building at 774 Dutton Street for nearly twenty years, has been operating as an antique furniture repair business since the late nineteen eighties. Mr. Sokolowski's had a steady decline in business in the last four or five years, is having a hard time generating enough income to keep the business going. Mr. Sokolowski would like to subsidize his income by opening a takeout coffee shop at this address. He would be using a portion of the building, approximately 280 square feet, shown as the shaded-in area on the Board of Appeals Plan. Because of the decline in the antique repair business, Mr. Sokolowski does not need this area for his display. Mr. Sokolowski has talked to several people in a two-block area near his shop, and they liked the idea of a small coffee shop nearby. The operation would consist of coffee, donuts, probably a stand-up cooler for stuffed drinks and ready-made sandwiches, and a daily newspaper stand. Operating hours would be from 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And most of the coffee shop business would be generated by businesspeople within walking distance, or by people driving up curbside and going in and out, and getting their coffee and going to go. The building is located in a light industry zone and requires a special permit from this board to operate a takeout business. Mr. Sokolowski would like the board's consideration in this endeavor. If you have any questions, I'd like to try to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I went by there several times, just to check it out at different hours, and it seemed like, you know, it would be mostly just foot traffic from around there, right?
Yes.
It's not, it doesn't seem like it's a heavily congested area at all. And you said your hours of operation would be six to 1:00 PM, is that seven days a week or five days a week, or did you, is it?
Five, five days a week.
And is that, am I assuming that's Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Monday through Friday, six to 1:00 PM? And it's just takeout, you're saying, right? Just takeout coffee and snacks?
Takeout coffee and...
Sort of thing? Okay. All right. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to oppose this petition? Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll open up to the board. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the customer base would be local businesses in the area, is that pretty much...
Two-block radius he's talking about.
Two-block radius?
Yes.
Which also has a little bit of residential in it too, also, I believe.
Yeah, a small part of, yeah, mostly business in the area. There is some residential.
And will he be the only employee at the business?
Uh, yes.
So he'll be running that, plus still keeping his regular business? Yep.
Which he's trying to phase out because it's really slow, you know, so he'd be running that for the most part.
So I take it he's never run this type of operation before, this would be a new venture for him?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Jack?
I agree with, through you, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the comments. The area is not conducive to parking anywhere, it's walking traffic, small enough radius. I really don't see any issues at all significant with this petition, and I would support it.
Thank you. Cory?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question. Now, you said you're going to do donuts and muffins or whatnot?
Yes.
You got, those are going to be brought in from offsite, sir? There's not going to be a kitchen on-site, is there?
Right.
Okay, excellent. Well, I think it'll be a good thing for the neighborhood, I really do. There could be a lot worse things going in there, and I did tour the building today. Now, you're only occupying a small amount of this business, of this building, rather, for this coffee shop, correct?
Yes, just a shaded-in area.
Yes, okay. All right, well, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to approve this project, and I think it's a good project.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you very much.
Kevin?
No questions.
Okay, and Rick?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I agree, I think it's a real good project for there. I think, you know, his antique business is probably something that's by appointment anyway, it's probably not a lot of walk-in traffic that's going to distract him from the counter, he'd be serving coffee and things like that, so I think it's a, the businesses are compatible. I don't think there's any need for any parking, I think it, touring the area, I think it is basically going to be foot traffic, so would be willing to support this. So, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Need a roll call?
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Mr. Knox?
Approve.
Mr. Benvenu?
Approve.
Sir, you've been approved unanimously with five votes, all I need you to do is come up and sign this plan right here, anywhere on it. Please hand it to Maribel after you sign it, and be careful of the wires that are on the floor. Thank you, sir, good luck. Thank you. Good luck. The next petition is ZB 208-00017. This is a variance, the applicant is Coalition for Better Acre. The address is 760 Merrimack Street, 20 Decatur Ave., and 117 Salem Street. This is in an urban mixed-use area, and the petitioner requests to renovate, renovate the former St. Joe's High School to condominiums without the required parking or land area dwelling unit according to section 6.1.4 and sections 5.1 of the zoning code. Good evening, Mr. Flood.
Good evening, Mr. Gary. Is this on? Is it on?
Yep, they're on, yep.
For the record, James Flood, 81 Bridge Street, Lowell, Mass., representing the Coalition for Better Acre, and as the notice stated, we're talking about the premises located at 760 Merrimack Street, 20 Decatur Avenue, and 117 Salem Street. The Coalition has a purchase and sale agreement with the Catholic Charitable Bureau of the Archdiocese of Boston to purchase the property. We're before you tonight for variance from the required parking and also the land area per dwelling unit. With me tonight is Madeline Nash from the Coalition. We have our engineer, John Boardman, who's right here from Land Tech, and John Winslow, who's our architect. I think you're all familiar with the former St. Joseph's High School located on Merrimack Street, and what they intend to do is do a complete historic renovation of the building into twenty-two affordable residential units. The affordability of the units will remain in perpetuity, it's really to benefit the residents of the neighborhood. The units will be available to residents having incomes ranging from thirty percent to sixty percent of the area median income, so it's truly an affordable project, very similar to the one that this board approved in 2005, and I think a lot of you were sitting at 511 Moody Street, where it was the elementary, St. Joseph's Elementary School, which was converted. In addition to renovating the building, they also intend to maintain the architectural integrity of the building for the neighborhood, because we think it's a very important part of this project. The unit breakdown of the project is, there would be six one-bedroom units, fourteen two-bedroom units, and two three-bedroom units. The parking would be located on the two vacant lots in the back, there's presently a parking lot at 20 Decatur Avenue and 117 Salem Street. We were able to provide for twenty-three parking spaces in there, which amounts to just a little more than one per unit. As we did in the Moody Street project, my client has conducted a survey of the neighborhood, which I've passed out to you people pertaining to the availability of parking on the street in the neighborhood. In addition, back in November of 2007, when Brian McGowan came in with his project at the church, the DPD staff also conducted a survey in the neighborhood and found that there's sufficient on-street parking that would be available to service that project, which is really across the street from this. So there seems to be plenty spaces in that area, and the DPD staff, in their report to the planning board, did recommend this project. As to the request for the land area per dwelling unit, John Winslow will explain that a little better than I can, because I think the makeup of the units inside is driven by the location of the windows, and based on that, we came up with twenty-two units. We did, we did appear in front of the planning board last Monday night, and they unanimously approved this, this project with the, with the provision that, as Reverend Mahiers, we have to deal with the city engineer on the drainage. She was on vacation last week, I guess she just get back today, so that's one of the conditions of that approval.
Can I say, I see ten, ten general conditions, those are all the, the standard conditions that go along.
Yeah, but the, on the, on the last page, there's two, there's two provisions. One is...
I see that, yep.
We deal with the engineer's comments. I have it in here.
And a historic marker or picture, something related to that?
Those ten is, is, it says that our plans meet those ten, ten requirements of their plan, but the conditions on the back, subject to the concerns of the city engineer, and subject to a provision that we put some sort of historical marker or pictures within the, the building to show the historical significance of the school. So I've also submitted to you letters of support from Brian McGowan, who's doing the church, from the House of Hope, who's up the street, from Donna Devoe and Suzanne Frichette. And, you know, I think because of the desire to retain the existing building and the size of the vacant lots, I think that they would suffer, my client would suffer severe hardship if this petition was not allowed. So I think it'd be beneficial to the neighborhood. It'll provide more affordable housing for residents of the neighborhood and it'll also retain the historic significance of that building. So I'll turn it over to John to explain the architectural makeup of the project and then, John, we'll speak on the engineering and we're here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim.
Good evening. My name is John Winslow, Winslow Architects. Thank you, Jim, for that introduction. We're the architect with Coalition for Better Acre to restore and preserve this building. As you probably know, the Coalition for Better Acre is currently renovating the grammar school, so we're graduating. This is the high school, the same, very similar building type, similar issues. Like to say, even at this age, there's always a learning curve and we've learned some from renovating of the current building and we're bringing that to this building. The, I'm sure you all know the building. It's a very handsome building in some ways. It's kind of a dominant building along Merrimack Street at that point and a decision was made very early on, both for aesthetic reasons and frankly for financial reasons, to seek historic tax credits. So we are preserving the building in really all respects and as I'm sure you know, when you do that, you're to a large extent being driven by the building itself. So we're working with this building. These are photographs of the building, the front on Merrimack Street, of the rear, and then the side elevation. The site plan is here and we talked in depth by John Boardman from Lantech as far as engineering issues, but just to orient you to the proposal, Merrimack Street is up here. Decatur Avenue is a side street running off of Decatur Street, which runs between Merrimack Street and Salem Street. The building is a good old typical school building. It's got a strong central corridor and classrooms off of it, so I'll show you the floor plans in a second, but essentially it's a corridor that runs right down the middle of the building. We are, the only change we're making to the building itself is that the building, we wanted to have an equally strong access from the rear of the building, which it currently does not have, but has a side entrance. So we are introducing an entrance into the rear of the building, which is here on access. The parking for the building is in the rear, so to a large extent, this is really gonna be almost like an equal entry point. The building, the unit layout inside, which I'll talk very briefly about and happy to answer any questions about, but we're, to a large extent, are being driven by the windows and the window placements. The windows will be in their location, of course, will be preserved, both in their horizontal and vertical position. The issue that we're dealing with on this building and we had to deal with on the grammar school is that they were designed, for some reason, to have the lower floor is quite a bit below grade, so that the first floor in this building is like five and a half feet below the windows of that floor. So when you enter the building, the windows are right at grade, but the floor related to that is down about five and a half feet. And that, of course, presents problems from a, you know, residential habitation point of view. So one of the things that we're doing, which is obviously a cost affiliated with, but has to be done, is we're actually building a new floor in the building, raising the floor up to a height in relation to those windows. We're also, we'll be putting an elevator into the building, it's a four-story building. So these, well, again, on the first floor, there's residential units. We're also having some community space on the first floor, laundry facility, a community room. So these issues really, you know, become cost centers and we're dealing with this on the grammar school and we deal with it here. From a programmatic point of view, the direction given to us was to see what's a reasonable unit count that you can get into this building without killing yourself and without going through serious hoops, and that number was 22 units. And I'm gonna hold this up here. It's, probably can't read it from a distance, but just, this is the first floor. There's four units on the first floor and there's six units on the upper three floors, so that's how you come to 22. It's not a, it's not a mat, it's not a number that was given. It was a number that was arrived at by a very close study of the building. We've maintained the corridor system and we've taken liberties with the demising walls between the units, but they are, to a large extent, driven by the window placement. So this is the typical upper floor plan here and it pretty, falls pretty evenly. There's a little bit of fancy footwork in order to make things work, but it falls pretty cleanly. So we're restoring the building. It was a fair expense to do that. This is 100% affordable housing, so the direction was to get as many units as one can reasonably get there. And we're aware that that creates, it's one of the technical issues before you, which is that the land area, I think the zoning requires 1,000 square feet per unit and the land area doesn't quite support that here, so we're seeking that waiver. I think I'm gonna stop as far as the building goes. I'm happy to answer any detailed questions about the building and I'd like to have John Boardman come up and talk about the site regarding site and engineering issues.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's John Boardman. I'm an engineer with Lantech out of Westford. I'd like to keep my presentation fairly brief for you this evening. We've been dealing with DPD and resolved all of our issues with them. We still have a couple outstanding drainage issues with the city engineer, but I'm working with her to get those taken care of. And as I suspect, with the low-impact development that you're seeing on projects, that'll simply entail some additional subsurface infiltration under the parking lot and I think that's probably pretty common these days in the projects that you're seeing. As John mentioned, just to get you quickly oriented, we have Merrimack Street across the top along with our existing building. There is an existing parking lot today in the back of the building that is basically paved from chain-link fence to chain-link fence. There's nothing out there that's green. What we're really doing is trying to improve that parking lot to today's standards, create a nice landscape buffer around that parking lot with arborvitae creating screening, shade trees around the perimeter to provide some additional green space, and move the dumpsters that are sitting in the middle of the parking lot now to one dumpster that would be in a screen and in enclosure.
Whose dumpsters are those? They're right, I saw the two dumpsters. They were kinda just haphazardly placed there and it didn't seem like anybody was using them because the garbage was everywhere.
There's a food pantry in there now. The Catholic Charities runs a food pantry in the building right now, so that's what those are there for now.
Right. When you said the, you were gonna put our varieties and some shielding in, are you gonna get rid of the chain-link fence?
The intent was to leave the fence around the perimeter at this point.
And then put the avarites in back of the fence?
They'd be inside the fence. We'd be reducing the amount of pavement, cutting the pavement on our side, adding those arborvitae as a screen.
The only reason I ask because the fence looked like it was in pretty tough shape. I don't know if it can be painted or rehabbed or what can be done with it, but parts of it were missing, did I say?
I think, excuse me, Mr. Gary, I think the intent is there'll be a fence there, but they're probably gonna replace the existing, in the same location. They put a new fence.
So same location, but a different fence?
Yeah.
I was wondering how you could maintain that fence that's there.
It's a little tired, yes.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Again, so mainly the engineering aspects of this are improving that back parking lot, making it more attractive and providing paint stripes so that it's a controlled situation and the parking spaces are identified.
It would be repaved, I'm assuming? There's all kinds of?
Yep. The repaving is basically the area shown here in the dark gray, which is basically in line with the property line.
Is there any drainage back there that's required? Because it looked like it probably needs to be re, I don't know.
Right now, there are two catch basins in Decatur Ave., one here and one here, and our intent was to simply reduce the amount of pavement and continue to utilize those catch basins and that's one of the discussion items we're gonna be having with the city engineer. I think she's looking for a little bit more.
Okay.
Why don't you explain the concern that the traffic engineer had too and also how you're gonna take care of that?
Certainly. One of the other comments that came up from the DPD was traffic flow through the site. Originally, we had this center island simply proposed as paint stripes and there was a question about vehicles coming in and then simply driving across these parking spaces to wherever they were intending to park. So now we're proposing to have precast concrete curb stops to delineate these parking spaces, maintain this travel lane for the corridor. In addition, the intent here is really to make this a one-way situation where a vehicle would come in and enter the parking lot, proceed through the parking lot, out to Decatur, and then back out. And I believe in the planning board meeting, we discussed putting some, an enter and an exit sign to make that clear out.
Is Decatur an existing, I mean, I know it's existing, but is it a using, is it a street that's being used right now?
It's a private way.
It's a private, so does that require the easement or?
No, everyone has the right to pass and repass along it, so we have those rights.
I just saw you could see almost like a line of sight all the way to St. Joe's Hospital and it looked almost like more like an alley than a street, so I just, never really been back there.
I'm not sure of the history of it. It may have continued all the way down at some point in the past.
Okay, but there's no issues crossing over that or doing anything?
No, no issues whatsoever.
Okay. Great, thank you, sir.
Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
I have nothing else, no.
Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Welcome, sir. Please step up right over here first. Please state your name and address for the record, please, and tell us what you want to tell us.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lyneeth. I am the property owner of 12 Decatur Ave. I just had a question for John outside.
The entrance?
The exit and entrance of where cars was gonna be coming in and out. A vehicle who's gonna be leaving that vacant lot, a vehicle that was gonna be entering must wait at Decatur Ave, no, Decatur Street until they can enter Decatur Ave because that, it's almost like an alley. Only one car can fit in that little lane.
Right, could somebody address that?
Basically, the Decatur, I can actually up them in there. Decatur Ave is located here and it actually continues out to what is Decatur Street and then that goes up to Merrimack. And that is, as we said just a moment ago, it's an existing private way. Really, we don't have control over that entrance in front of those properties down there. It's a public or a private street, but it's a street and basically we have access over that to utilize the parking lot now. We're making as many improvements as we can to the parking lot, but we're intending to leave that portion of the roadway basically as it is.
Okay. Set any questions, sir?
Kind of, but I live there, so I know how the traffic flows.
Right. I think it's jurisdiction of the city more than anything. This isn't gonna change that at all, so I think maybe if you do see a problem after the project's developed, you can check with somebody in the street department or somebody in traffic department. I'm sure they can address that. Because I'm sure that you'll be in line addressing it because a lot of the people living there will address it before you, but it's a legitimate concern. We thank you for your comment.
I have another question.
Okay.
How is this gonna affect the short-term and long-term market value of the existing property on Decatur with all the affordable housing that's around?
Maybe Jim could answer that?
I think it'll prove, prove the value of the other housing in the area. We're gonna renovate the, clean up the whole outside of that building. We're gonna clean up the backyard. I think we're gonna improve the whole neighborhood. So I think in the long run, it's gonna improve the whole area.
I agree. I mean, I was back there. I can't, it can only help all the properties around there as far as I'm concerned from, I mean, you live there, so you know what it looks like in that parking lot.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's just trash all over the place. It's just real, I mean, it's decrepit.
Yeah, but I'm entering the streets, going to my parking lot, so it's gonna cause myself a little bit more headache if people, I have to wait for somebody to come back out and wait on the street. It's about 100 yards for you to even to enter that road, little alley.
Right, I think that's more of an issue for the traffic department rather than here. I think, you know, we got the comments from the engineer and they didn't see an issue with it, but I understand your concern, sir. If you have any problems, if this petition's approved, if you have any problems later, I'm sure that the city will address those.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Ma'am, anything you'd like to say? Anybody else wish to speak in favor?
I just wanted to comment.
Excuse me, ma'am. I just, I don't mean to interrupt. We're on television, so nobody can hear you, so you have to just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Madeline Nash. I work as the Director of Real Estate Development for the Coalition for Better Acre at 517 Moody Street. I just wanted to respond to the question that the property will be professionally managed by our property management company, so it will be very well-maintained and clean and, you know, we will make every effort to get along with our neighbors. We're very interested in getting along with our neighbors and we can work with you on signage to control the traffic flow as best as we can. But I think that, you know, because it's affordable housing doesn't mean that there will be any kind of negative visual impact on the neighborhood. A lot of the families that will be living there are people from the neighborhood already. They're working families and I think the property's gonna look really nice, so.
And is it going to be somebody that, say, this gentleman or anybody else that has a concern, wants it up and running that they can, is there an office there they can talk to or will there be somebody?
Yes, our property management office is located in the office building where we're located at 517 Moody Street, but also, you know, we would be happy to meet with you at any time and talk to you about any of your concerns, any of the other neighbors too. We're very interested in working cooperatively with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. And, sir, you know where that is? The Coalition for the Better Acre on Moody Street?
Yeah, I went to the website.
Okay, great. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this project? In favor? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Miriam Elcolani y vivo en el 205 La Moody, este apartamento ves.
Good evening. I'm the translator, but I just, Miriam Elcolanti, she lives on, Elcolani, she lives on Moody Street, permanent. She's a resident of the acre.
Okay. I come, estoy aquí como miembro del acre, verano, del CBA, para apoyar que se proyecta hacer unos apartamentos en el 760 La Meri Maestri y pido por favor que aprueben esto porque es para la gente que tiene bajo ingreso y hay muchos que no tienen apartamentos.
Okay. I'm here to, as a representative of the community of the acre and member of the CBA Coalition for Better Acre, to support and support the changes they're trying to do in this building on 760 Merrimack Street and to make it affordable for people that really needs it in the area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Favor?
Now is my turn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Elkin Montoya. I live on 1521 Vannam Ave in Lowell. I'm also the president of the CBA. There's four reasons I wanna state that I'm in support of this project. Number one is affordable housing. As you know, the CBA loan history has been the mission to create affordable housing for residents in the acre, for the newcomers, the immigrants. We've done it for the last 24 years and we'll continue doing it. So therefore, that would be one reason that I think that this will be, I'm in support of this. The second reason is, as you know, this particular building is not a productive building, is not paying taxes, so the city's not gaining any taxes in favor, in return. We're gonna make it a creative income production for the city. The other one is that our goal is to keep that building as a historical building. As you know, this bill, there's a lot of people in the acre in Lowell. Some of you, people that you know have been through the high school, graduated and gone to better things. I think our goal is to preserve that, a historical building. And the most important thing, I think, that in, about six months ago, there was an MIT graduate school, 15 students came in and did, and do a, what they call a west Merrimack Street long-term planning. And one of the things was they suggested is that some of these buildings or some of the buildings along Merrimack Street needed to be beautified and this is one of the things we wanna do. We wanna create that and we, the CBA Coalition for Better Acre, has found a way to do that and our records show that we can do it. As you know, we have, we're doing the 15 units. And one of the things was, they suggested is that some of these buildings, or some of the buildings along Merrimack Street, needed to be beautified, and what, this is one of the things we wanna do. We wanna create that, and we, the CBA, uh, Coalition for Better Acre, has found a way to do that, and our records show that we can do it. Uh, as you know, we have, we're doing the fifteen units on Moody Street, and thanks to the nonprofit alliance, we can do this, uh, and make it affordable. So, I am in favor of this, and I appreciate if you can also be supportive of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm also on the Board of the CBA, and urge that this Board unanimously vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this project, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition to this project? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll open it up to the Board. Um, start, I guess, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just two questions if I could. Uh, one being, or one comment, I'm glad to hear that, uh, the project, real estate taxes, it'll be on the city dole, as they say, so I think that's, that's a positive. But as far as Decatur Avenue, I noticed when I visited the project myself, now you said that's a paper street, councilor?
It's a private way.
Private way, which means?
It's been, it's paved, so it's a private way, it's owned by the, the abutters, they all have rights to pass and repass over it.
So does the city, for instance, plow that road?
I think they probably do, because their home's on it.
Okay. Um, I didn't see anything, has the fire department been down there and reviewed-
I'm glad you are. I have, I have the report from, it's the only one I have, if you wanna see it.
Well, I had the same observation when I-
That was my concern.
Okay. Of course, I'm gonna try to read this while my glasses again, yeah. That was a concern that I had, um, as far as fire department review and accessing the rear of the building. Obviously, that building's been there for many years, the, the private way's been there. But I did have a, you know, a concern over fire trucks being able to make its way down there and-
Captain-
In the event that there, there was any, uh, fire that happened down there, okay.
That's, that's Captain Webb assigned that, and he said there's no problem.
Yeah.
You wanna pass it down, so everyone can see if that's fine?
Sure. No, I, I think, um, and as far as the parking goes, um, the parking will be at the rear for residents only, I'm assuming. Again, that private way, I had another concern with people visiting or visitors coming on site. Uh, obviously, if you're gonna have that building being occupied, I'm sure people will visit, and then parking. I just wanna make sure that the rear of the building is enforced somehow, some way, I don't know how it's done today, either through the Lowell Police Department, that there's no additional parking on that back road, I don't know how that's enforced. But that was just another, again, I had just some concerns with that back road, and the fire department was my major concern. And beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bill. Jack?
Thank you, that was gonna be one of my concerns was Decatur Ave. Thank you, councilors, usually you're on top. That's been one of our concerns in, uh, having, uh, the various departments sign off and rather than just have the verbiage, and, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, this is a great project. Um, CBA has always done a great job in trying to, uh, revitalize, uh, the acre, and I think this is just another extension of it. I am absolutely one-hundred percent in favor, it's a great project, and congratulations, good luck with it, I will support it.
Thanks, Jack, I, I agree, I think it's a real good project, I think the request for relief relative to the land area per dwelling unit is minimal compared to the benefit that the neighborhood's gonna derive from that project, so, uh, and the parking, again, doesn't seem to be an issue down in that area at all right now, so I think it's only a positive, uh, for the whole neighborhood down there. I think property values and just generally, um, you know, revitalizing that whole western half of Merrimack Street, uh, this'll go a long way to do that, so I'm definitely in support of this project. Cory?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'm certainly in support of this project, I agree with my fellow board members. Uh, it's rewarding when you can help twenty-two some odd families achieve homeownership that probably normally wouldn't. Uh, this is a, a nice building, I happened to be there this afternoon at the same time as the chairman. It's, uh, very neglected, broken windows, that parking lot in the rear is an absolute mess. And, uh, I just couldn't believe it, what kind of shape it's in, but where it's going is, uh, really exciting to me. And, uh, to echo Mr. Bailey's concerns regarding Decatur Street, now, it, as he, he mentioned, it is a very narrow street, and I'm glad to see an emergency vehicle can access the building. Now, is there any chance that, is that going to be paved as well? So I don't think it is currently.
Well, we're gonna pave in our section of the, of the buil, you know, between our building and the parking lot, but the rest is, we don't have any rights to.
Oh, no, okay. Okay, well, maybe we can get some city involvement there, but other than that, the project's got it all. Uh, I think the parking is adequate, as the chairman stated, uh, the green space, uh, the fencing, the, the abutis, uh, the trees there will definitely give some privacy to there, and, uh, the, the project's got it all. I, I support it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Cory. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to echo the, uh, positive comments that my fellow board members have made, I think this is great for the, the neighborhood. I think it's positive in keeping the historic character of the building and providing affordable housing. I echo some concerns about Decatur Ave, but given that we've got, uh, sign-off from the fire department, um, I think it's just a great positive step for the acre, and I'm in support.
Thank you. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great project for down there. Um, hopefully when Brian McGowan gets his building up and running, we have some other properties over there on Moody Street, we'd like to see somebody take a hold of it and do some good work with. The question I have is, uh, we have any ADA units, is there any ADA units in here for a handicapped person in a wheelchair, or? Do we, we set any aside or?
Um, yes, there, there are two, and, uh, um, one of the things I didn't mention, uh, in, in constructing the new floor that we're building, we're taking that opportunity to build that floor level with, with grade, so you can access the building without having to have ramps on the exterior. Um, there'll be, uh, access that grade, and then there actually is gonna be a ramp inside the first floor, getting down to this new first floor level, which would be about a foot and a half below grade. So, there will be two handicap access, fully accessible units, yes.
So, two units, that's great to hear. Uh, I'm in support of this project, it'll be a great thing out there for the city. Thank you.
Is there any need for an elevator in there?
You mean by code or by desire?
By, by desire, I mean, is there any-
By desire, yes. Uh, we are putting an elevator in.
And is, where was that located, on the, on the plan you have there? I'm just wondering if it's towards the front or the back?
It's towards the front. Um, oh, this is still working, sorry. Um, well, the front of Merrimack's here, this is the upper floor, but the elevator's here. There's an existing stairwell right here at the front of the building, and we have an elevator shaft right next to it.
Is it an exist, existing elevator or?
No, it's an, it's a new shaft.
Okay. And Jim, I think the, uh, well, we're talking about conditions, are the standard ones that the planning board put on there, and then the two additional, uh, conditions that, it's the standard ones about the fill, the cot, everything like that.
What?
The conditions, the standard conditions that the planning board put on there regarding the, the first ten, the fill-
But those aren't, what those first ten are, see, it says that our plans contain those, that's what it said, those aren't conditions.
So the only conditions we're talking about are the two on the second page?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from any board members, any other comments?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, before we do make a motion, I would like to, uh, commend the CBA and all those involved, outstanding job. It's a great project, it certainly will help the neighborhood. A vacant building, dilapidated building does not help anybody, whether it be the, uh, the neighbor who spoke tonight, the city, nobody benefits from that, great job. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following conditions, uh, set forth, there are a total of two set forth by the planning board.
Okay, I need a second.
Second the motion.
I need a roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Belanger?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Gary?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Knox?
Approved with conditions.
You've been-
Kavanaugh?
Approved with conditions.
Okay, the project's been approved unanimously. Uh, Mr. Flood, if you could just come up and sign this plan? And please hand to Maribel, just be careful of the, uh, wires.
Yeah, probably be a good move.
Thank you, guys. Jim, if you could just, watch those wires. You can't see them all blended in.
Okay, yeah.
Now, Jim, you're, you're here for the next two-
Yeah.
At least, okay, so, just procedurally, um, I have a potential conflict of interest, so I'm gonna be stepping down. Uh, Mr. Belanger's gonna be taking over as far as the brasi, do you have any objection to him taking the first brasi and the second one requesting an extension together?
No, no.
And then just because-
You're gonna step down on brasi?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. We have five, yeah.
Have a full form.
On both brasi, yes, and the-
It'd be nice if we could do them both together, and then, Jim-
That's what I'm saying, just procedurally, okay?
Step down for western half, but not for brasi, no.
I mean, I just have another handout for those of you who weren't here before, so.
Okay, the next petition this evening is Brasi Development, 106 Marginal Street, they are here for two requests this evening. One is for a request for an extension of a grant previously granted. The second is for a variance to construct student housing for UMass Lowell exceeding the maximum allowed front yard setback that's required. We will take this, uh, out of order this evening and start with the sis, six-month extension. So do we have what we presented up here tonight from Brasi Development? Mr. Flood?
Yes, you do. Uh, if you'll recall, we were before the Board, uh, last year in June for a request for a variance on the parking for these dorms at the university. And that was approved in June, and it was filed with the city clerk on July 6th. So, as you people know, there's been some RFPs out for, for the dorms of the university, and the university has not made the decision as of today's date. So, in order to, uh, to protect this variance in the event that my client do get the opportunity to build this dorm, we'd like that six-month provision as, and, uh, that's, that's the only reason. Hopefully, we won't need it, but if we do, I wanna have that protected.
Thank you, councilor. Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Again, this pertains to the six-month extension.
Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh, zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., and urge that this be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Anybody else like to speak in favor, in favor of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Is there anybody like to speak in opposition to this project? Opposition. Ma'am, pick the, ma'am, please sign in and, uh, state your name for the record, please.
Am I speaking against the six-month extension or the scope of the project?
Yeah, at this time, yes.
Will there be an opportunity to speak about the project?
Yes, yep, there will be a separate, yep, okay, yeah. Okay, hearing none, that portion of the hearing is now closed, let's, uh, open it up to the Board. Mr. Benvenu?
To you, council, we just ran out of time trying to get the, uh, bids in and stuff.
No, the bid's in, but the, the university hasn't made the decision yet, so just trying to protect that in the event we get it, and, and, you know, if it's not done-
Then you'll execute it within six months?
Yeah.
You feel confident, okay.
Oh, I'm sure it'll be, come out with, probably within the month.
All right, thank you, no other questions, Mr. Chairman?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Knox, anything to add?
No questions.
Mr. Bailey?
No questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, well, uh, I understand a project of this magnitude does take time, there's probably studies that are involved and, and whatnot, so I understand there can be delays, uh, but I do hope the project does go forward, for the record. Um, so I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Belanger?
Approved the six-month extension.
Mr. Knox?
Approved six-month extension.
Mr. Benvenu?
Approved the six-month extension.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Approved the six-month extension.
Okay, council, the six-month extension has been granted?
Thank you.
Good luck. I don't think there's anything you need to sign, uh, at this time, I don't believe.
Should I proceed on the other part?
Yes, now we'll proceed with the, uh, variance to construct student housing for UMass Lowell exceeding the maximum allowed front yard setback that's required.
Uh, for the record, once again, James Flood representing Brasi Development Corp. And, uh, I think this Board, most of you members were on the Board when we were in here last year, but one variance that we did not obtain was a variance from the maximum front yard setback. I think you can recall the project, and I've given you a picture of the project as approved by the planning Board and, uh, presented to this Board. And on, and it's impossible in an institutional, in, in this, in, at this site, in an institutional zone, to meet that requirement, because it's a high-rise building, and we have to provide access around the building for the fire department. It's a safety issue more than anything, and the, 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 uh, fire lane is, is fifteen feet, a minimum of fifteen feet, and we're on the side, so we're about twenty feet through the fire lane. Now, if you look at the site plan, the frontage that we have on this property is on Marginal Street. Marginal Street ends, the, the middle of Marginal Street was abandoned before Brasi Development, so we only have forty feet on each side where the frontage is, so there's no way we can meet that requirement. So there's definitely, uh, a hardship here, uh, for this variance. So, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, but that's the purpose, so we'll be able to provide a fire lane around the entire building, because it's a high-rise building, and the fire department needs that for access, basically.
Thank you, councilor, okay. Uh, okay, let's open this up to the public. Is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition, in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning Board of Appeals, again, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., wish to be recorded in favor of this. I think it's an excellent proposal, and it will, uh, do wonders for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Hearing none, that part of the hearing is now closed. Is there anybody like to speak in opposition to this project, in opposition? Ma'am, please sign in, uh, sign, for the record, please, and state your name.
My name is Denise Arvidson, I live at 14 Stevens Street, and, uh, although I'm loath to admit it, I've, uh, owned a home there for over thirty years, and, uh, believed in the renovation and rejuvenation that was happening in the city thirty years ago, and continue to support that. I do not wanna speak out of turn or out of order, am I able to comment on the scope of this project and communication around this project at this time?
Yes, you may.
Okay, 'cause I, uh, I should've been here perhaps six months ago, a year ago.
That's correct, yeah.
Uh, I was not aware that this project, in, in my opinion, has morphed over the course of the year from some townhouses that were going to provide some additional housing for the university, to, uh, I've seen some requests for proposals that portray high-rise buildings and, uh, thousand units, or thousand students. I'm very concerned about, uh, the scope of the project. Uh, Stevens Street, the portion of Stevens Street that I reside upon is that very small piece that is perpendicular to Marginal Street. It's the shortcut that folks take and don't get over-
The north side of Stevens Street, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
To Wilder. Uh, it's a very dense neighborhood, uh, many two- and three-family multiple homes, and, uh, very limited off-street parking, if any, and, uh, I'm very concerned about what constitutes almost putting a small city in, in the middle of a, a neighborhood. A second point, if I might make that, is what I believe is, uh, a lack of communication about this project with the neighborhood beyond perhaps the direct abutters. I've been, uh, given some information about the Highlands Group coming out in favor of this project. Uh, I dare say that there is quite a difference between the Highlands and the Lower Highlands, which Lower Stevens Street is considered to be part of. So I was not aware of, um, any outreach to the community in any significant way. The neighborhood continues to be a neighborhood of families. Uh, families, uh, come and go, there's a lot of, uh, uh, turnover in the neighborhood, but it is a neighborhood of families, and I think that this project will have a significant impact on the quality of life for families in that neighborhood. I don't think that adequate consideration has been given to the impact, and, uh, I was very pleased and very moved to hear at every point this evening, uh, your chairman, who has since stepped out, but respectfully, as chair, the question- who has since stepped out, but respectfully as Chair, the question has always been asked and the comment's always been made, I think this will be really good for the neighborhood. Well, I dare say I'd like to close with this comment, that I believe that this would be really good for the university, but I'm not convinced that this would be really good for the neighborhood. So, I ask that this project slow down, that we consider the impact, the scope of the project, and reach out to the community a little bit more concerning this project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Flood, can we answer any of this woman's concerns, please?
Well, you'll recall, I mean, the property is properly zoned for dormitory. You'll recall when we were in here last year, Nancy Judge from the Highlands Association was here and spoke in favor. We did meet with the neighborhood association before we came in, before we went to the planning Board, and before we came to this Board of Appeals, and we had 100% endorsement of Nancy Judge Group. Now, I don't know whether that's, which group that is, but we did reach out to the neighborhood-
Yes, as I recall, it did have unanimous support, that's correct.
So, I mean, is, the project has been approved with this, with this one required variance, which I don't, you know, the fire department's gonna require it, and I, there's no question, it's a hardship, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to speak in opposition, sir? Sir, please sign in and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Salvatore Lapome. I live at 1291 Middlesex Street, where the sun actually would come up over this place and give us a big shadow. We were away for a couple of months and we didn't even know this was going on. If it is approved, I don't want it approved, but I would like a privacy fence. I pay taxes like everyone else. My taxes aren't gonna go down, but I'm sure the value of my property's gonna go down. And also, I'd like to have, make sure that there's a study done on the crime, increase in crime rate in the neighborhood with that many people moving in. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition?
Do you have to be a wall president to speak?
No, not necessarily.
My name is George Lohrendo. I own the property of 1281 Middlesex Street, which abutters this project. My question is simple. There's been a lot of plans made here. I'd like to know why this variance is coming up now. Fire department should've known about this before. It should've been, it should've been brought up before. Couldn't the building be made a different size or something? I just don't understand why, at the last minute, after this has been on the books for a year virtually, why we're now coming up with this question. I agree, we need proper room for emergency vehicles, no question at all. I'm just curious, why now? Is the building, is the building too big? It's a pretty big building. Maybe it's too big for the site, I don't know.
Okay, so as you already know, the project is already approved, it's only-
Yes, yeah, I know all this stuff has already been approved, but-
Okay, yep.
-if we're moving the building, is that going to affect any of the parking? Is it gonna bring it too close to the parking? I'm just curious why it took so long for this point to come up.
Yes. Mr. Flood, can you answer that question, why the delay with the fire department and is parking affected at all?
We're not moving the building. The building is located where it was previously presented to this Board. The reason we didn't present it before because it was not brought to our attention at that time that we needed that variance. I think it was a recent change in zoning, because it's a maximum setback, not the minimum. So, but we're not changing the parking that was previously approved, and we're not changing the location of the building. It's all the same, just that something was missed at that time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Sir?
Doug Gordon, 11 Wilson Lane, North Shunsford. What is this project? Is it regular conventional dormitory space or is it this new approach with apartments towards dormitory space? It's my understanding that originally this was, what, 144 units?
I wanna say conventional dormitories, Counselor, am I right?
So, two questions. How many students are gonna be in these dorms and how many on-site parking spots?
This phase is 400.
Yep.
The parking is-
We've provided onsite 245 parking spaces, and then we obtained the variance. We had the letter from the university to use that other parking area. 240 required on this phase, we have 245 onsite. But the other variance was already approved.
Yep. So, sir, there is, the project contains 245 parking spots, which, I mean, students-
The variance would extend the-
Correct.
That's the point, that five for-
How many units, Counselor?
That was, no, that's been changed-
More than, more than, yep.
...space for every two beds.
Yeah.
That was changed. So, we have, we have onsite 245 plus we have the variance to park on the university lot on the other side of the railroad tracks.
And the second part of the question, what is on these students? Is that 400?
400.
And that's all phase of this project?
No, it's the first phase.
And the base is this?
Two, two plus two. Two plus two.
So, is there enough space on the site for additional parking space? The base two-
We have, we have the variance to park on the, on the university lot across the railroad tracks, which has previously been approved.
Or base two?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else like to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the hearing is now closed. Let's open it up to the board. Mr. Bailey, we'll start down with you.
So, my understanding, tonight, we're just here to speak about the fire lane. That's all we're here to speak about tonight.
That's why we're here, correct, yep.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Yeah. That was gonna be my point. I can understand when people come in unconcerned, but unfortunately, when this petition was first presented to us, abutters were notified and as the counsel for the petitioner stated, and again, throwing kudos to the Counselor, each time he brings a petition before us, one of the things that we specifically look for, and we address each and every petitioner, and it's, we feel as though it's incumbent on him, is to reach out to the abutters and the community. And one of the councils that traditionally always does that and recommends that to the petitioner is Council Flood, and he addressed that. We know that the organizations and representatives of the neighborhood were notified, so unfortunately, you've come a little too late. We've already approved this particular project. What we're here now voting on is whether or not we wanna grant this variance, and as the counsel has stated, this is more of a significance for safety issue. Once this project is up, we wanna make sure that fire trucks can get there and rescue vehicles can get there to help the students who are in the facility. That's what this vote is about, and I am in complete support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. Mr. Kavanaugh?
I echo Mr. Knox's comments that this is really just a technical matter, that it's been approved and there's no changes to the, to the plan as before us tonight. It's really just about granting variance for relief that wasn't acknowledged previously, and I'm in support of this proposal.
Mr. Benvenu?
I agree, it's, I wasn't here when this was proposed. It's just a variance for the fire lane, which obviously was oversight from somebody. I think it's unfortunate if they have, the neighborhood has problems now, but we have to give them the variance for this, this fire lane. It's life safety device, so, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Benvenu, and I must agree with my fellow Board members. I voted in favor of this project, and I still think it's a good project. And I think the petitioner, along with Council Flood, did their due diligence to the neighborhood. They reached out to the neighborhood groups, I think they're very considerate and did all they could to help make this work, and were looking for your input at the time. But unfortunately, the project has been approved, the way it is, all the Board members have stated, for this variance, so an emergency vehicle can access this building. And in the name of public safety, I can only support that. So, with that being said, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Approve.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Mr. Knox?
Approve.
Mr. Benvenu?
Approve.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Approved.
Okay, congratulations, Councilman, approved unanimously. Please step forward, sign up. Yep, okay. I'll let, I'll let you in. Okay, our next scheduled petition is 122 Western Avenue, but Council Flood would like to discuss a matter with his client, so we're gonna oversee that and skip to 21 Eugene Street, Albert Stamp, who has requested for an extension of relief previously granted. Mr. Stamp, please hold on, we're gonna wait for the chairman. Mr. Chairman, please come back and take the podium.
We're gonna take ZB 2007 000027, a request for extension of relief previously granted for Albert Stamp, 21 Eugene Street. Good evening, Mr. Stamp.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board. I'm coming before you tonight for the previously granted relief on June 11th of last year, looking for a six-month extension. Certain circumstances with myself have put me a little behind, put me off track. I am aggressively trying to hit the target of June 11th. Unfortunately, taken on a new position with the civil service position. I'm stuck at the academy right now under training pay. My lender isn't eager to give me the money until I graduate the academy. So, as soon as that's done, I have a conditional approval waiting for me to go back to my regular pay rate, then I'll be closing on that. You know, I have a lot of men and machines waiting to get this project underway. I do understand it's been an eyesore getting rid of a lot of the material and having to leave it through the winter. You know, it's not, it's not an ideal way I wanted to approach this project, but, you know, I'm aggressively trying to, all my bids are together, everything else is in line to get going, just unfortunately, my graduation's June 20th, this expires June 11th. It's, it's really a little tight for me right now.
Okay. One condition I'm gonna suggest that you put on, and only because I've been by the site several times, and, you know, it looks like you tried to, you know, blast or dig up some of the rock-
We removed it.
It seems to still be a big, a big mound of rock somewhere, is that, or is that soil? It looked like rock to me.
In the front, yeah.
Yes.
What we did was, we did some exploratory stuff, Mr. Chairman, because in order for me to get the engineered plans and design for that house, I had to make sure that I was gonna be able to go with the basement. What that entailed was digging, where the ledge exists now is basically where the driveway-
Yep.
-is gonna reside. Anywhere behind that, there is no ledge present. We removed what was there and it was loose rocks. I was able to take off what I could, was get in a six-wheeler and a trailer. I'm beyond my equipment means right now, I need professionals to take care of the rest of it. So, we had dug down to make sure that when I ordered the plans, had them designed, that I was gonna be able to get the foundation, which we've done. Unfortunately, the rocks that I've had to leave behind are a little bigger than, until I can get the big machines in there.
So, just in the interim, the condition I'll suggest is that you just get a roll of that construction, that orange construction tape?
Yeah.
Or construction fence, I should say. I think it's a rubber or plastic.
I did have some before the winter, the snow.
I saw that it was crushed, but just because it's the warm weather, kids are gonna be attracted to that naturally, to any kind of, you know, anything like that, kids are just gonna go right to it. So, if you could just fence that off with that, and we'll make that part of a condition?
Absolutely.
Did you do that within, you know, two weeks, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'll actually try and get over there this weekend.
Right. Just a safety issue protects you more than anything, but I saw kids roaming around there and I just know that when they get out of-
I know that they are, I find trash and stuff in those, you know.
Right, that's right where they're going when they get out of school, so, okay. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Favor of this request? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition of this request? Welcome, sir. Sure.
My name is Stephen Levinson, and we reside at 19 Eugene Street. We're direct abutters to the project. We have some concerns about the mess, and I provided photographs of it, I see that the Board members have been by. When Mr. Stamp first applied for his variance, we were opposed to the project on the grounds that the proposed structure was too large for the property and the comfort of his neighbors. The Board agreed and denied his petition. It was also noted that he failed to communicate and consult with us, his neighbors and abutters, and had not shown good faith as a community member. Later, Mr. Stamp came to us with a modified proposal for a smaller structure. He also said that he was sorry he had not consulted us before and promised to be careful, to be conscious of our needs as his neighbors. At that time, we felt he was displaying a new attitude, and so I then wrote a letter in support of his application for a variance. You may have that letter in your records, I don't know. At this time, we are very sorry to have written that letter. Even before obtaining his variance, Mr. Stamp borrowed a bobcat from a relative and came in and completely tore up his property, leaving us living next door to what I can only describe as a scene that appears to be the result of a wartime bombing, and you have pictures of that. We have been living next door to that mess for over a year now. This was a year ago, before the end of the summer in 2007, I spoke to Mr. Stamp about the mess he had left us with, and he promised to clean it up before the winter. He said, "I would not want you to have to live with that mess for the winter." But he did nothing about it, not a stone was moved or anything cleared, and there was no communication to us. This March, just two months ago, completely fed up with the situation, I again spoke to Mr. Stamp. He made lots of excuses about why he couldn't proceed, and then he promised to have the lot cleaned up within two weeks by the middle of April, but he did nothing once again. If he did not have the resources to complete the project, why did he not have the common decency not to begin and tear up the property and leave a mess for his abutters and neighbors? This showed us that he had really not changed his attitude towards us. He has shown that he is high on excuses but unwilling to actually act to do anything about the situation. At this time, we are less concerned with whether Mr. Stamp gets to build his house than whether the lot will ever get cleaned up. What if he cannot mount the resources to finish his house? Will we have to live with that mess forever? What power does this Board have to address these issues? At the very least, I would ask the Board to require that the property be cleaned up prior to granting Mr. Stamp an extension of his variance. Would the members of this Board be content to be living next to this mess he has created? What can be done about this intolerable situation? My wife and I wanna thank you for allowing us to address our concerns.
Thank you, sir. Maybe I can answer some of your questions that are directed towards the Board. Well, first of all, I don't think anybody on this Board who's gone by there would, would be willing to tolerate living next to that. I mean, it's definitely, you know, it's, it is as you described it. It looks like a, you know, like there was a bomb dropped there. And, you know, part of it probably was related to the, you know, winter months coming and the rationale that Mr. Stamp gave us tonight about his personal situation, but, you know, I agree with you that it's, I wouldn't wanna live- I agree with you that it's, I wouldn't wanna live next to that, so I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that I would, but, you know, your next question is, what can we do as a board? What power do we have? We can do a couple of things. We can impose reasonable conditions on the extension, or, you know, we can simply deny his extension. If we deny the extension, sir, my guess is that you're gonna be stuck with that parcel, like in that condition, for a very long time.
Yeah, I didn't come expecting that, even to suggest that, because frankly, if he gets his house up, it'll be a lot nicer than what we're living next to now. So, you know, but the thing is, because of the fact that he made promises and then didn't follow through on them and didn't communicate with us, my concern is, because he seems to have a problem getting resources together, what if he can't finish the project? What if he just leaves it the way, that's what he did for the last year, he just left it the way it was. What if it stays like that forever? I mean, can he be required to clean it up before he can continue?
I think the city would require that, yes. Not this board, we don't have that, that's beyond the scope of our authority, but I think that what we could do is not extend, you know, his approvals, but like I said, if we decided to do that as a board, I don't think that would solve your problem. I think what we could do is, like I suggested in the condition, have him at least rope it off with the construction fence as a safety issue in the first thing, and then give him a short rope as to timeframe to clean it up a little bit, as best he can, in between now and the time that he starts the project. I didn't, I mean, I remember your letter from before, and I assumed that the neighbors had no problem with the condition until I heard you speak tonight, so, and I agree with you. I just, I wouldn't wanna live next to that, so I guess, you know, just thinking aloud, some of the things we can do is maybe allow a shorter extension and, you know, require some cleaning up in a, maybe one month period, have him come before the board and demonstrate that he's done something, so at least there's a calendar rolling on it, so, you know.
That's what I was hoping for. One of the photographs in their collection shows the view from my bedroom window. There's a pile of boulders as high as the window right outside our bedroom. And when I spoke to him in March, he promised to take all those boulders and move them to the back of the property and level the whole thing, and I said, "Fine," but not only didn't he do it, he never called us, he never came, there was no communication. So I don't trust him. It's that simple.
Well, yeah, and I-
I have no problem. Every time he's spoken to me, he's spoken very nicely. He said, "I have all these problems, but I'm gonna do this," but then he doesn't do it. So I felt that I was forced to come down here. I didn't wanna come down here, and I don't wanna oppose his project, but I don't wanna live next to the mess either. So I appreciate your suggestion of giving him a month to clean up before he can continue. I think it's a good suggestion.
I'm not saying the board will vote for that, but these, and, sir, this is a public hearing, and this is the time to voice the concerns. Mr. Stamp is here, you're here, so there's no better time than, you know, get it all recorded, so we know what's going on, so I can understand your frustration. So, Mr. Stamp, can we ask you a couple of questions, please? I mean, first of all, if you could just, you know, these pitches speak for themselves. People have been by there. You live there, so you know, or you're familiar with the area, so you know what it looks like, and you know what his concerns are.
I have a family that lives there, so it's just, I understand their-
Right. What do you suggest we do? What do you suggest to, you know, alleviate his concerns?
I mean, I can go there, I can move boulders to the back of the property. My thing has honestly been going to the academy in the beginning at 30 years old, if I was doing it 10 years ago. I'm not a spring chicken to be over there moving stuff right now. Now, I could probably free up some time as I'm getting to the end of it, but to be honest, I've been wiped. And I did explain that to him, I did explain that to the Kellys on the left, that, you know, the up-front part of the academy was gonna be a little tough for me, and soon as I could get over there, I would. I don't wanna impose anything else on them. I don't want them to have to look at it any longer than they have to. I need a house sooner than anything. So, you know, as soon as I can get over there, I'll get over there for the safety issue, get the fence done. As soon as I can get a machine over there, I have a machine sitting out in Malden right now that I'm waiting to come back. As soon as that's back, I've had intentions to be over there to move the stuff. I mean, we physically know I can't move them with my hands until I get a construction loan. You know, we're at a bigger scale of this project than I can physically do anymore, so, you know, any suggestions for what he wants cleaned up, where he wants it moved, you know, I'm open to doing any of that.
The problem is, it wasn't really an attractive site to begin with, and that's why we gave the approval. I know it was a very undersized lot, and, you know, you had the support of the neighbors, so we, you know, believed that, and you probably did make a good faith effort, but the end result right now is that this, this is just, not only is it an eyesore, it's a real danger, I think, to anybody going around there.
The early digging periods that he explained in his letter here, too, that was exploratory stuff that, this was six or seven meetings that we went through in deciding how extensive that ledge was. That digging before it was approved was more of an exploratory means of getting answers for the board, when I had the quotes over there. So digging it up earlier wasn't to, you know, to make a mess, it was to get information. So, you know, I wasn't looking to make the site look worse in doing any of this. I'm trying to alleviate the issue that's there and this ledge being there and get that out of there. Doing any further work before the winter last year, you know, I'm not gonna unload my personal problems as to why that happened, but to go any further to the left, if you, when you look at that site, I don't wanna dig down any further over there, cause undue erosion until it's time to just take it all out of there, and that's why I left it. It was a combination of a safety issue, and I don't want it eroding all over the place, 'cause that's gonna cause a whole new set of issues. So that's why it's sitting in the state that it's in, was more to hold the land back right now. So, I mean, any, you know-
I'm just a little bit reluctant for six months. Six months is a lot of time, and if nothing, if you run into other problems and these abutters are forced to wait six months just for the time to come by, so-
Right. So, I mean, if there's something in the early part, if you put some green plants in certain areas to make it not look so bad, throw some grassy down, move some things around, I'll do for the short term. The thing is, as soon as I'm back to my normal pay scale, which is the end of June, that takes two weeks for a pay scale to turn over, goes to the bank, I have a conditional approval waiting, which, I mean, if-
Right, but to meet the requirement to get your permit, my understanding is you just need to pull the building permit, is that correct, Bob? And then he's got his approvals? So I'm not talking about the construction phase.
Right. I had to pull the foundation permit. The problem with pulling the foundation permit and putting a foundation in Massachusetts, most lenders, I would've done that already. I could pay to do that right now, do the site work, put the foundation in. Creates a whole new set of issues in the banking world where now I'd have to refinance a foundation to put a structure on it. It no longer becomes a construction loan. That really poses a lot of issues financially for anybody to try and do that. So that's why I haven't progressed with the foundation side of it.
Right. I guess, you know, if it's, you know, the middle of May now, and if you're granted a six-month extension and you run into other troubles, whatever the unforeseen troubles or any troubles, we're talking about June, July, August, September, October, middle of November, and then we're into the winter again, and then the neighbors are forced to look at it throughout the cold months, and now we're back here, it's May next, I mean, I just don't wanna put them in that position.
And I agree. The site work is promised to be done and removed. I think it's in the ballpark of 220 tons of material that are coming out of there. That's a three-day process. When that's done, that site is getting graded, the foundation's being dug by the same company.
Right. I think their concern is, once, when is that three-day period gonna end? When is the latest that they're talking about?
Soon as the bank funds in July, that starts instantaneously. They're calling me every week to get over there. It's a company that I became very in tune with in going through this whole process. That helped us a great deal in finding out the best process of doing it. They're always waiting for me to do it, and I've been talking to them constantly. So soon as I'm done the academy, which I said is June 20th, I'm signing the papers, I'm moving on.
And then you can pull your permit, you'll get your funding?
I'll pull my foundation permit. I've sat with Mr. Caracho in the past 30 days and explained about the foundation permit. I went back to my lender, and I have a letter right here, I can't start any construction process until this loan's closed. So I could physically go, pay to have the site work done, put the foundation in out of my own pocket. That's kinda where my finances end. Now, I have to find a bank that wants to look at me, 'cause it's considered a structure in Massachusetts. It's a lending law.
No, I understand that end of it. I'm just, and I don't think, you know, I think the neighbors, their concern was they wanna know, you know, how much longer they're gonna have to look at that. And my concern is, I don't live there, but my concern is, how much longer is it gonna look like that for safety reasons?
For safety reasons, I can move the rocks for safer, I can dig and grade them back, so they're not gonna move and be a safety issue. Net that off for the immediate future. As soon as the construction starts, I mean, we're, there is no skipping at that point. As soon as I'm coming to the end of the academy, they are all lined up, it's all quoted, everybody's ready to go. Like I said, this is a nonstop-
So the first thing they do is, they're gonna take out all the-
They're gonna take all that out. They come in, they're gonna, as we explained in the previous approval, they're gonna come in and they're gonna drill all of what is left that I couldn't move with small machinery. They put a tapered bit in it, push it down, split it out into smaller fragments. Same thing with some of those larger rocks that are kinda unsafe to be rolling around the yard. That's why they're where they're at. And load those, get them small enough to load into trucks. That material leaves the same day. Soon as they're done that, they have it to a flat lot. They're gonna, to Mr. Levinson's side, because of the grade change I have in the topography, there'll be a retaining wall for drainage reasons and retention reasons that'll be put in, kinda simultaneously with that. They're gonna dig the foundation as soon as it's graded off. Any extra material leaves almost in the same day, so that's why it's a three-day process, 'cause the last day is basically feathering out for the foundation crew to come in and drop the-
Okay, so that's, their worst-case scenario would be July, until that's July-
We're talking framing before the end of July.
Okay, so sometime in July. Now, what can we do about in between cleaning it up, between tonight and, you know, the very near future, cleaning that up so they don't-
If I can ask Mr. Levinson, I mean, what would be your immediate concerns that you'd like to see happen?
Sir, could you, I'm sorry, we're on television, so could you please just come up to the podium?
I spoke to Mr. Stamp on the phone in the middle of March. He said that what he was gonna do was move all the rocks to the back of the property, get rid of the piles, and level the whole property so it didn't look so unsightly, and he promised to have this done by the middle of April. He's never had a machine there once. So all I'm hearing is excuses and delays and no promises of a date.
Okay. When can that be done, Mr. Stamp?
As soon as I get this machine, within a week. If I can't get ahold of the machine, that is a relative's machine, I'll rent one.
All right. Now, this is just, the board can, I can have other comments, but just as a suggestion, Bob, there's nothing that stops us, that you know, from approving it for three months rather than six, the extension.
Correct, or approve it with this, for six with whatever conditions, so it becomes automatically renewed to a full six. If he agrees to do something within a certain period of time and he's in compliance, that it's automatically renewed, let's say, for the next three months, that gives him the full six months at that point.
Maybe a review in three months?
What I would suggest is, if, and the board can discuss it, what I would suggest is that we give him two weeks to clean up the property, level it, just like he said, that's satisfactory, and then have him back in here at the meeting within a month. Does anybody have the calendar, Maribel? We're in a meeting in June, just for compliance purposes.
Well, I think if he, if he, if Mr. Stamp has the funding, I understand about the financing and the structure already on the property, but if he has the funding to actually put in that foundation, which is, at this point, based on his comments, is not to his benefit, I would assume he at least has the funding to clean that lot up to a point where it's a little more respectable than it is at this point, such as relocate some of that stone to a better place, or remove some of it off the lot, or something to improve the situation the way it is right now.
Right. Is that a problem? That, you know, what would stop you from removing?
Removing it is a matter of the equipment. The equipment to have it there, it's gonna be the same equipment to split it. So to have it out there more than once, I mean, we're talking quote ranges of moving that rock range from 50,000 to 15,000. I'd rather have them out there one time for 15,000 instead of having to increase my budget by $35,000 to have them out there twice, and that's the reality, to have them out. So my proposed idea there would be to, where, the point of the way the materials are laid out now is there was the sifted cleaner material towards the back. I was leaving that there to pull that forward after the rocks were moved out. What I can do is roll the larger rocks over to the back of the lot for now, kind of a staging area, for safety reasons, backfill them with the soil that I do have available, grade that off to the best that I can with smaller machinery, because to get bigger machinery in there, I mean, that's outside of my financial means right now without funding.
All right.
So, for appearances, I can, I can get it to look a lot better than it does. I mean, we're still gonna be looking at dirt in any measure, but-
Right. I don't think that's their concern so much of dirt. I think it's just the way, you know, the way it looks, and I'm sure it didn't look any better over the winter, but-
Yeah, I can start on that within a week.
Right, so you think you can have that done within two weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to see a, some sort of a construction schedule, an estimated or a proposed schedule on his behalf. I think that would help us track this a little bit better and give us a better handle on his timeframe, Mr. Stamp's timeframe.
Okay.
If he could produce that over the next week or so and bring that to my office.
Yeah. Why don't we say, construction schedule, proposed construction schedule within a week, and this isn't voted on, so I'm sure the other board members, but what we're talking about is a proposed construction schedule within a week, cleaning up the property, leveling it off and covering it with dirt in the interim, having you back here for a compliance, compliance date, some meeting in the end of June, June-
Chairman, my only question with that is, where does that put me with the expiration of June 11th on the initial?
Well, I think this would all be a condition of us granting a six-month extension, but what we're trying to do is build in some-
Some compliance.
Some compliance dates here, so the neighbors are satisfied, and it keeps you on schedule too, in case something else comes up. They don't, you know, they have no other recourse, because tonight's the public hearing, so we're just trying to address all their issues out of fairness. Does June 9th give you enough time?
June 9th, yes.
June 9th, okay. So that's just, that's a date. We haven't, you know, we haven't voted on it, so I'm just throwing those dates out there and these conditions out there, and let's see if anybody else has anything to say, and then we'll go back. Okay, anybody else in opposition? This petition in opposition? Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll open up to the board. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I guess the only comment I would make is, talking about pushing the larger boulders to the rear of the lot, hopefully that doesn't get pushed onto somebody else's lot now, not that it's going to be blocking and interfering with their way of life over there, but I wanna make sure if we're not gonna move stuff, we're not gonna move it onto somebody else's property and then have another issue here, so, beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I can't think of anything else. I think, you know, all I can say is, I know I wouldn't wanna live next to this. This is, it's not really tolerable, but I'll leave it to the rest of the board members.
Thanks, Bill. Jack?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the photos basically depict a war zone, and I can understand Mr. and Mrs. Levinson's concern, and the other neighbors as well. I think, to the petitioner, we've made several overtures to you and gave you some time prior to this point, because you ran into other issues, and obviously there was the actual terrain inherent to the property. As the chairman alluded, it was an undersized lot. Because there wasn't any opposition, we supported the petition. Some of the comments that have been discussed, the June 9th, for two weeks to clean up the area, I would be more inclined to look at something that fellow board member, Mr. Belanger, alluded to, and that would be two weeks, the construction schedule, and a three-month extension, and then according to whether or not all the conditions have been met, then extend it to the six months. But I'd like to see that there is some way to motivate the petitioner. We certainly are concerned and understand your financial situation, but we also have to be sensitive to the neighbors. So if there is some way that we can institute a review, so that we're seeing something within an extension, say, of three months, you come back and none of the conditions have been met, then we'll have to address it at that time.
Jack?
Corey? Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm as concerned as my fellow board members. Now, Mr. Stamp, you know, this was a difficult project to approve in the first place. You were in front of this board several occasions, and I think we did our best to work with you. And due to the fact that was, you know, we wanted to keep you in the city and the lot was very unsightly originally, but now I think it's even in worse shape. And I know, understand your career changes and your financial constraints at this time, and I think, you know, the end up, the right thing will end up being done, but, you know, in the interim, I still think you might, probably could've been doing a little more. So, I mean, what I'd like to do is, if this does get approved, you know, I do wanna see this, the boulders in the rear of the lot ingrated to the best of your ability for the meantime, with some fencing, 'cause, you know, at this time, you are kinda affecting the quality of life of some of your residents, okay? It's gonna look good in time, I have no doubt, but we're gonna put a few conditions on it if this does get approved, some fencing, you know, the boulders in the rear of the lot somewhat graded, and any other concerns the board members may have. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Corey. Kevin?
I'd echo the sentiments of the other board members. I know this was a tough project to approve, but it was approved based on neighborhood support and improving the site itself, so I think that's an important condition that I would wanna see to- itself, so I think that's an important condition that I would want to see to vote for any extension here. And care is very important in the construction. One of the big things that we talked about during the application was, you know, careful removal of the materials there because of the ledge, because of the adjacent property, so I really want to caution you to, as you're doing this work, it sounds like some of it may be done yourself, that you take great care when you're, when you are grading and cleaning up this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have an idea, Mr. Chairman, maybe we continue for two weeks? He says he can get it looking good in two weeks, the neighbors can be, if the neighbors show up and say they're happy, I think if we give him a continuance, if we, they have no leverage, he thinks he can make it look good for the neighbors in two weeks, I would support continuing it for two weeks, let them try to clean it up, make it look good, and then the neighbors come back, or they come back and they say they're happy with looking out their bedroom window. Again, we don't live there, so if something else happens, you know, out of the realm that we can't control, and then you say, well, I can't do it now for another seven months, six months, whatever, they have to live it, but we don't. That's my suggestion, that's what I would be in favor of, is continuing till the 9th, and then he doesn't expire till the 11th. If he gets it cleaned up for the neighbors, then he does what he's promised he would do.
Now, we also have a meeting on May the 28th as well, which is a Wednesday, so that's an option too, Mr. Beavendale.
Well, I think the 28th may be a little bit soon, but I agree, you know, Rick, that's probably a decent idea. Are you available, sir, that night?
Correct, to the chairman, Maribel, the next meeting is the 9th?
The next meeting's the 28th.
And then, meeting after that's the 9th?
Is the 9th.
That's a Wednesday meeting, because of the holiday.
The 28th is a Wednesday, but the 9th should be on a Monday.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with the 28th, with the longer holiday weekend, I do actually have extra time, because the academy takes the day off, because it's a state day, so I could probably get more done within that previous weekend to finish it up, so I'd be open for the 28th.
Okay, so, you know, that's a good suggestion, I would rather support that as well, that, you know, hold back on the approval, we'll give you another, we'll continue this meeting until the 28th, there won't be any further notices, and sir, if you do what you tell us you'll do, you know, we'll get, we'll give you that approval at that date. But if the neighbors come in here with pictures saying you haven't done anything, and it's just, you know, they've just been told you're gonna do things, you're gonna have some problem, and we don't want to see that, because we know you spent a lot of time on this property, we know it's been in your family, and, you know, we know, you know, you've expressed to us your personal problems with getting it done quicker, but, you know, you run the risk of us pulling that permit from you, so I would, I would agree, the 28th, and it can be reviewed at that point for compliance and further review, and then we'll vote on the extension at that time. And then you shouldn't have any problem if you do what you say you're gonna do. And I, you know, I don't see any other neighbors here, so either they take you for your word, or they understand the situation, but I think of, I think the neighbors that did show up made very good points about, and they don't seem like they are malicious at all, it seems like they just, you know, have had it, and I can understand that.
Agreed.
Okay, so, any other discussion from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so just to reiterate to Mr. Stamp, so he does leave this room tonight knowing where he's at, so we're looking, in the interim now until the 28th, we're looking for him to have the site leveled off, and the boulders relocated to the rear of the lot preferably, in some kind of construction fencing point, is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, and I think, I think we're talking about, first, the silt, if you're gonna redo the silt fence?
Yeah, the, the hay bale for the erosion.
The silt and the hay bale, redo that, because I think you have to anyway, after winter. And the second one is just wrap it with that orange construction, safety.
The mesh fence.
The mesh fence, just to keep kids out of there. And I think if you do those three things, and you come back here on the 28th, I don't think we'll have a problem with the extension, you know, especially you'll be able to tell us, you know, more clearly what your timeframe is at that point. If you could also, by that date, get a proposed construction schedule, we'll make that a condition, that gives plenty of time, Bob, doesn't it, if the 28th? So propose, you know, we won't necessarily hold you to every single day, because those things change, but we need an idea as to where you're going, I'm sure the neighbors have concerns.
Yeah.
Okay? So do we have all that down? We'll try, if we don't, we can add it in, okay?
Are we, are we making conditions on this?
Yes.
Continuance?
We're gonna continue it with the following conditions.
Okay, gotcha.
For compliance on May 28th. So this is gonna be a motion to continue this matter until the next meeting, which is May 28th, which is a Wednesday, there will not be any further notices, and the purpose of the meeting is for review and compliance of the conditions we're gonna impose on the continuance right now, and those conditions are? Mr. Clerk?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve of the following conditions, that the site be leveled off and boulders relocated to the rear of the lot to enhance the appearance, that construction fencing be installed, preferably orange mesh construction fencing throughout the whole circumference of the lot for safety reasons, that a proposed construction schedule be submitted to the building department on, probably to the 28th, definitely, as soon as you can get that done, and.
And the silt fence and the hay bales be reestablished.
That's.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
End roll call. Let me continue with the conditions.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to May 28th with conditions.
Mr. Belanger?
Continue with conditions.
Mr. Gary?
Continue until May 28th with the conditions.
Mr. Knox?
Continue till May 28th with conditions.
Mr. Benvenu?
Continue with conditions to May 28th.
Okay, sir, this matter's been continued with the following conditions for compliance until the May 28th, which is a Wednesday, not a Monday. Again, there'll be no further notices, and, you know, we're hoping that you can comply at that point. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, since we've taken the petitions out of order, we have a final petition, that's 2007-00063, a repetitive petition from BPV Lowell LLC, 122 Western Ave, also known as 150, 200, and 250 Western Ave. This is an artist overlay district, and the petition is requesting to find a substantial and material change to the proposal previously denied, January 28, 2008, pursuant to Section 11.2.5 of the zoning code. I have a conflict of interest in this matter as well, so I'll be recusing myself, and Mr. Belanger will be sitting in my spot.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a conflict.
And Mr. Beavendale also has a conflict.
Okay, before we open the hearing up on this petition, Mr. Flood, we have a total of seven board members, there's one absenteeism this evening, and two had to recuse themselves due to conflicts, so we have four members left to speak, and you, if it does get approved, you will need a unanimous vote, I just want to make that clear, you have an option to continue.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, and I've spoken with my client, and he's instructed me to proceed.
Excellent, okay.
So, for the record, James Flood, 81 Bridge Street, Lowell, representing BPV Lowell LLC. And what we, we're before you tonight, requesting a repetitive petition, petition in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 16. Section 16 provides in effect that no petition for a special permit of variance that has been unfavorably and finally acted upon by a permit-granting authority may be acted upon favorably within two years unless the permit-granting authority finds by a two-thirds vote, which would be the four members, specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous request was denied. That's basically what Section 16 says. The petition that we filed, and that's before you tonight, has the following specific and material changes. First is the parking, as proposed for the development now conforms to zoning, the previous application had requested a variance. All units proposed in the present filing are in excess of some 750 square feet and conform with zoning. The prior application had some units that were less than 750 square feet in size and would require an additional variance. The new application is for 68 units and four separate units in the development, as opposed to 48 that was previously submitted. There'll be, there's one unit proposed in the tower building, 16 units proposed in the A Mill, five units proposed in the B Mill, and 46 units in the G Mill. When we were in here before, we were only involved with the G Mill, and we were requesting 48 units. You know, these changes are specific and material changes from the previous plan, and are made without the benefit of really addressing the specific reasons for the denial. According to the decision filed with the city clerk, the request for us, of previous variance and special permit was denied for failure to require the required number of consenting votes. That's verbatim from the decision, there was no reason given for the denial. So, in numerous cases that have been decided in our courts, it has felt that it's best for a municipality to reconsider a case based on specific changes, because it affords the municipality an opportunity to arrive at land use solutions that are acceptable to both parties without leaving the final decision to the court. As you appreciate, we're not here to discuss the merits tonight, we're only here to determine whether there are material and specific changes from the prior decision. If that finding is made, the next step would be to appear before the planning board, where we would once again need four votes, and if we did obtain the four votes, then the matter would come back here for full hearing. I urge you to find the specific material changes and allow us to proceed to the planning board, and hopefully come back before this board at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flood. Okay, we're gonna open the hearing up to the public, is there anybody here that'd like to speak in favor of this petition, in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, Potato Contra de la Mesa, and I urge that this board unanimously vote to approve this petition, because it definitely is, based on what I've heard this evening, that there is substantial and material change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Anybody else like to speak in support of this petition, in support?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the record, my name is Carl Frye, I'm a principal in BPV Lowell. Good evening, thank you for having us back in front of you. I make a 400-mile round trip every time I appear before you, so I'm grateful for the opportunity to stand up and say hello again. The simple request is a procedural finding tonight that the application before you, although involving some similar aspects to the prior application, has specific, substantial, and material differences, and I would call your attention to three, that, to be repetitive, that Mr. Flood has already called your attention to. One, very simply, that the prior application involved 48 units, that the current application involves 68 units. Two, that the prior application included 48 units in only one building in the complex, that the current application includes 68 units in four different buildings in the complex, and finally, that the prior application requested a parking variance, and that the current application does not, all three of these being specific material and substantial changes from the prior application. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. And I'd be interested to speak in favor, in favor. Hearing done, that portion of the hearing is now closed. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in opposition to this project, in opposition? Sir, please, sign in, please, and state your name.
Ronald Belly, 400 School Street, Lowell. I've been at that same location for approximately 25 years. The noise and the pollution that comes from the trains alone, even in the middle of winter, with the doors and the windows closed, the high winds, I'm approximately 200 to 300 feet away from those trains when they're parked on the other side of the canals. The smell that comes from the emissions from those engines idling, that's 24/7, they don't ever shut them off. I've seen them parked on the other side over a whole weekend, they'll stay there, and they idle all that time. When they start up, that noise goes from that engine all the way down, all the way down, if there's 40 cars, if there's 80 cars, that noise just travels right down when they either start or stop. But the smell, the emissions, is something that I don't know how anyone can live in that area where they want to put these project. I just don't understand how they can go there, to work there is enough, I can close my door at 5:00 PM and walk away from it. If they're gonna live there, they can't do that, and once again, it's 24/7. A lot of things happen, even during the weekends, they're running those trains up and down, and they're not passenger, it's all freight, and there's a lot of noise and a lot of emissions running from those. As a rule, it's either three engines or four engines that are idling, and many, many, many times, the whole weekend, from a Friday right through to a Monday morning, they'll park right there and idle all this time. Some of those, when they park near that building, they're only 20 feet away from that building of this proposed project, and other times, they might be 150 feet, but between the emissions and the noise, it's, it's hard to live with, very hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that'd like to speak in opposition to this project, in opposition?
Good evening, my name is David Gray, I live at 33 Briar Ravon Lowell, and I also work for Cosangian Enterprise, who owns one of the properties on Western Avenue, and I happen to be the project, the building manager of that building at 215 Western Ave. It's an industrial zone, commercial zone, it's, all our tenants are industrial, commercial tenants that have gone in there, under the understanding they're an industrial area, not a residential with industrial, you know, it's, they were under the understanding, they rented and signed leases, knowing that they were gonna be an industrial area, so this project definitely does negatively impact our business on that street. It also, you know, it's, what they have there now, they have artist workspaces that have seemed to work out very well in the area, we've had no problems, we've actually had very good relations with the, with the neighbors that are in those, those workspaces. We've donated bricks to help build their patio for the flagpole patio. I've had conversations with Roland Cosby, Heather Wang, that have their businesses in those artist workspaces. I just think that this, to have people try and live there now is absolutely a mistake, it's like oil and water to mix industrial with residential, it's not a good thing, and I think the city's actually setting a bad precedent by rezoning all this land, and industrial industrial land, to residential. We're not a Tewksbury, we're not a Chemsford, we have big, we have big venues in our city, the Saugus Arena, the Lasher Park, the Auditorium, and it takes a commercial industrial base to support those, not just residential. So the more that we rezone this, these properties, and it's just, it's a bad precedent that we're setting, every time you turn around, something else is being rezoned to residential. A prime example is the Sucey property, and over on Mount Vernon Street. City took it over, it was gonna, they paid money for him to move, it was gonna be turned into residential two years ago. Nothing's been done on that property. Again, commercial industrial property, taken off the tax rolls, nothing's been done with it, to the tune of over $2 million that cost the city. I just feel as though, you know, I don't, I don't know what the change is on this plan, I know there's different units, there's, they're actually adding units, which is not a good thing. I don't assume there's gonna be any deed restrictions on these condominiums that, you know, down the road, they sell to families, and there's kids actually playing down in this area. Would be a horrible thing, there's a train track that's not fenced in, there's a canal, there's all big, heavy industrial equipment being used all the time, 18-wheeler trucks being used. I just think it's, it'd be a very, very bad idea to allow this to go through, and I don't know if, this is coming back now, that they're looking for just one of the pieces to be, they don't want the variance or the special permit, I'm not sure which, but I don't know if there is a lawsuit that's out there now, is this gonna benefit their lawsuit to have only one piece of this project approved that way? There's a lot of questions that need to be asked, and I just don't know, you know, and I definitely just think this is a very bad idea for that area, that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, but to answer one of your questions, yes, they are intending to, and add approximately 20 additional units, just for your information. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to this project, in opposition? Sir, please sign in, please, thank you very much.
My name is William McCann, I own a property at 40 Payne Street, it backs up to the canals, it's a six-bay industrial garage, I'm just concerned, once they move in... It's a six bay industrial garage. I'm just concerned, once they move in, the noise that we generate during the day is going to be too much for them, and it'll just, it's not a good place to live, right there in the middle of an industrial area. So, I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition, 122 Western Avenue. Hearing none. That portion of the hearing is now closed. Mr. Flood, would you like to add something to these concerns before I open up to the board?
Well, I mean, I think I was quite specific when I came up, that we're not here to discuss the project tonight. We're only here to discuss whether there's specific and material changes that were made to the plan that's presented tonight. I don't think I've heard any evidence that they're not specific and material changes. If we come back, then all of this other information can't be presented at a hearing. I'm just asking for an opportunity to go forward. You know, Mr. Gray has indicated the zone, well, the city council did approve this, so I don't think we should get into that. I just, I would like an opportunity to present this to the planning board, come back to this board. We can have a full hearing, and like the court has said in numerous cases, maybe there's some conditions that could be placed that would satisfy everybody. But it's an opportunity, instead of a court just saying it's going to be approved. I think, you know, this is the way I'd like to proceed, and I would hope that you find that there's specific and material changes, and let us go forward, and then hopefully come back to this board when you could either approve it or deny it. That's it.
Okay.
But I don't think I've heard anything that says that my change is not specific material.
All right, thank you very much. We're about to open up to the board. Okay, Mr. Bailey, we'll start with you.
Through you, Mr. Belanger. I don't really have anything else to add. I think the petitioner has expressed why they're here, and I, I'm pretty sure I understand what we're voting on, so I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Knox?
Through you, Mr. Belanger. Again, I just want some clarity, because I want to make sure. I stated my, and I'll state for the record, my opposition to the petition. But that's not what we're voting on this evening. And I, I thank the council for clarifying that, and I just want to make sure I understand correctly. What we're voting on is whether or not, and I'm, not even whether or not I approve of the changes, but simply that there were sufficient changes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, we're voting on whether or not there were sufficient changes, and then after that vote, and actually, it's, I think it's a yes or a no, you would have to go back to the planning board?
Specific changes. We'd have to go back to the planning board and obtain four votes from the planning board, that there were same changes.
Okay, and then you would come back here. Is that correct?
Then you, we'd come back here, we'd have to file, we'd have, as Mr. Camacho will explain it to you, we'd have to file a complete application, and then there'd be another hearing. Yeah.
And at that time, we can vote, voice our opinion on whether or not we support the specific petition as it reflects, as some of the abuders have stated, whether it's in conflict, in their opinion, with residential and industrial. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity, clarification. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Well, just recognizing why the applicant is here tonight, that this is really just to acknowledge if it is specific and material changes. I think I could acknowledge that fact without stating other opinions or beliefs on this application. I would just point out on one of the, the comments, that units all in excess of 700 to 750 square feet, that's actually not a requirement under the AOD overlay district.
It is.
There's a provision that it could be accommodated, but I would acknowledge that this is a material, materially different proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I mean, I understand why you're here tonight, and I think the board has spoken on it, and right now, last for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the finding of substantial and material changes to the proposal previously denied on January 28, 2008.
I think it's, it's specific and material.
Specific and material? Okay. I don't, I don't see that in, in here, but I'll-
That's, those are the words.
Specific and material, okay.
Yeah.
Specific and material changes?
Yep. Specific and, yeah.
Madam Secretary, is that clear? Can you get that? No, I'll need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes or a no?
Yes.
Mr. Belanger?
Yes.
Mr. Knox?
Yes.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Thank you very much. There's nothing I have to sign or anything?
I don't believe so. There's nothing, there's nothing you have to sign?
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Okay, I think the final thing, order of business we have is just the acceptance of the April 14th meeting, but I don't think we have those minutes that we've had a chance to review them.
No, I just accepted them tonight, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'll need, we'll have to continue that till May the 28th.
Well, we didn't accept them. We received them tonight.
Received them tonight, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, will, everybody have those minutes in their package?
Yes.
So, we'll review those minutes, and we'll put those on, Madam Clerk, for acceptance at the May 28th meeting. So, any other business, anybody? Nothing? Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, officer. Is it substantial? I'm going to write substantial. Substantial.